Welcome to the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Posino. I am the season's chair and residing District Two. And we will start our introductions of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom, then we'll move to Zoom. So we'll start down here with you.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Derek Day, District One.
Kevin Passinger, District One.
Commissioner Wheatley, are you that?
Yeah, Helen Wheatley, she/her. One of those. District One.
I thank you very much. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda, and if so, I entertain a motion on it. It's been moved and seconded. I do have to make one change to this, and as on item number nine, we're removing the discussion about future planning commissioners. We're going to hold that another time when some new policy decisions have been made. So that would be an amended agenda, and I hope that's still needed and seconded. And if so, we'll call for the vote.
Hi.
Mr. Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Prethender.
Hi.
Vice Chair Dave.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi, that agenda has been accepted. With that, we're going to move on to the meeting minutes of July. Oh, go ahead.
I, that was really hard for me to hear. So when, when there's a roll call, could you really belt it out so I can, so I can hear?
You bet. With that, we'll move on to the agenda or the approval of our meeting minutes from our prior meetings. If everybody's had a chance to look over our July fifth, twenty twenty-three meetings. I'd entertain a motion on them.
Move to approve.
Second, it's been moved. And second, is there any discussion on the meeting minutes from July fifth? Without call for the vote?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Prethender.
Hi.
Vice Chair Dave.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
I, the meeting minutes from July fifth, twenty twenty-three have been accepted. With that, we'll move on to their meeting minutes from our July tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Entertained motion on those.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on our meeting minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty-three? Doc, we'll call for the vote.
Halverson.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Prethender.
Vice Chair Dave.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi, those meeting minutes have also been accepted. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is public communication. For those participating by Zoom, please choose your raise your hand option to address the planning commission. You'll be promoted to panelists when it's your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. A three-minute timer will show one of the video screens to help you track, keep track of time. And we're going to start off online, and then we'll move to the boardroom so people can test, provide testimony here, too. So online first, we have Phyllis Farrell. Phyllis, are you there? Phyllis, you're still muted.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your service. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to let you know that I attended one of the listening sessions regarding comp planning for twenty forty-five, and I thought it was really well organized, conducted, informative. I wish there'd been more people there, but it was very, very useful. And so I want to commend you and the planning department for these efforts. I guess we need to continue that public outreach to reach more people, but I was, I was happy to attend and found it very useful. And then the second thing I was going to say is, is it would be really nice and useful for me to be able to see who else. I guess I see a few people here that are now on as participants. So thank you, Maya, for, for your efforts on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Is there anybody else online that like to testify for the planning commission today? All right, we're going to move to our in the boardroom. Folks, oh, we do have one. Who is it? Sarah. Sarah Tong. Sir, if you'd like to address us, you'd be welcome to.
Yes, my name is not Sarah Tong. My name is Lee Reiner, and I don't know how I got that on my email. Can you hear me now?
You can. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lee Reiner. I live in Thurston County for forty years. I wanted to also express my appreciation for the planning commission working toward the comp plan. Yeah, there are a lot of big issues in the comp plan, and they have to be addressed, and I think public outreach is so crucial to many of these issues. I know that many of my friends have been talking about issues regarding buffers and buffers for lakes, buffers or streams. Many of us have worked on these issues because we feel that it's vital to have appropriate buffers between streams and lakes and water bodies in general and development. And so we're very concerned that the planning commission has enough room, enough buffer room, and holds to it and does not change the buffer so that you allow development closer to the water body. We need the eel grass out on Bud Inlet. Puget Sound extremely important for a variety of species. The buffer allows that area to preserve the natural ecosystem of the water body. And so many of my friends have been commenting upon that in particular, and I wanted to address that. So thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commission? Is that John, John Newman? Yeah. John, John Newman, you're up.
Oh. Hello.
You're on.
Good evening. Yes. Could I address an issue about a? So if somebody wants a variance to build in the county, they have to apply for a revised used exemption. Can I just say a few words about that?
Please do.
Um, so a gentleman wanted to build a house. He, we, it was in the wetland buffer of a hundred and sixty feet. They reduced it down to fifty feet for so he could build a house. He went ahead and built the house and still was in within twenty-five feet of the buffer. I can't imagine why I'd build a half million dollar house like that, but the city of Olympia has the staff go out and check the staking of the house. And in the future, I don't know if the county will have will have the manpower or can get the manpower before approval for building residences, especially within wetland areas. This house in particular happens to be out near McLean Creek Trail, right down on the creek. You can see it from the Beaver Ponds. It's it's kind of too bad that he built the house and then blew it and built it in the wrong location. He applied for an exemption. They won't give it to him. I don't know what the person's going to do, but anyway, that's my point is that it'd be nice if the county could go out and check the corners of a building before they actually build it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online? It doesn't look so. So we'll move here to in the boardroom, and the first person we have signed up to speak is Sam Payne. Sam, if you'd like to come up to the podiums.
Well, thank you for a lot, Nick. I'm here to represent the interest of the Farmer-Veteran Coalition, National Organization. We have a large big chapter. Farming and preservation is very important to us in order to maintain our business. The other thing we need to look at is the concern of adequate food production in the United States, which is the highest level as U F D A and Department of Defense. So you know that. One other thing is order to maybe assistance. I have put forward a initiative. I choose zero zero four. It's listed on the Secretary of State website. We didn't make it to the ballot this time with enough signatures. We're going to do the legislature in the spring and see if we get it passed. Now, actually, I don't have a copy of that thing, and we handed that to you. Now, what it does do, it grants the individual legal standing to have a garden and raise vegetables. And that is not true within a lot of the areas of the U G A because of certain land pay requirements to whatever. That's kind of like a little right to that. So I would appreciate your support, Neil, in getting that thing through. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Payne. Up next, we have Marcy Cleaver.
Good evening. I'm Marcy Cleaver. I'm part of the Community Farmland Trust, and I've raised and grown food cattle for two years. The trust wants to see a vibrant local food and farming system here, and that's what we look towards. So I'm here tonight to speak for farmland preservation. I encourage you to think not only about our farmers today, but in the future, just as we, the trust is contacted by three separate farmers looking for land. So it's an issue today. Access is an issue. Availability is an issue, and it will only get worse depending on what you guys decide to do. The ramifications for food availability in our community, as Sam pointed out, will also be affected by what you decide to do. As you may know, when the county purchases development rights, it can help to keep farmland affordable for tenured and aspiring farmers in the future. So keep that in mind, too. So tonight, as you look at the soil's classification for number four and decide whether or not to protect that land, think of the reasons why that land is classified as such. Note that.
I mean, the other stuff, I'm going to, I'm going to stop you. I'm going to because I'm going to object to this testimony. I mean, what you said before is okay, but you're specifically now talking about something that we have already had a public hearing on.
What is that? I'm not sure.
The long-term ag stuff. We've already had our public hearing.
Okay, so can I talk about soil classification?
I mean, I think it is for our discussion today, but we've already had a public hearing. So I don't think we can allow. I'm not comfortable allowing more discussion on it.
I appreciate Chair Commissioner Nelson's perspective, but the chair has to make this rule, and it cannot be given that number.
One of the problems that we've run into before on this particular issue is that there has been some possible disagreements on whether or not we can accept testimony after a record has been closed. And the record's officially closed when we have our public hearing, and then it goes on to the Board of County Commissioners. There is some disagreement, and we have not, I've not seen the policy yet on whether or not we allow testimony in our body after the close of the public record. Letting people say it doesn't mean we have to do anything with it. But I'm still a little uncomfortable with that. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, I mean, if it's about the soil typing, I mean, one of the issues here is that they did, the public didn't have an opportunity to comment on that because it was, it was brought forward after the hearing. And so I'm wondering if we couldn't bend the rules a little here to, to allow for testimony on something that people didn't have an opportunity to talk about at the hearing. But that we're addressing.
Commissioner Prethender. Oh, Commissioner Hanson.
I just want to say that's a really fair point. That some of the information.
Oh, it's just that I think we would have to officially reopen the comment period and do appropriate noticing, like we discussed last time. If it's something that you're going to take into consideration, then we want to make sure it's everyone gets that opportunity to comment rather than just one person tonight, because then you're also not hearing from other folks that we've told the comment period is closed. It doesn't mean that comments can't be submitted. It just means they're going to be with the board rather than the planning commission. This isn't the end of the process.
Did you have any more Commissioner Prethender?
Yeah, I agree with all of that. The information I received from others that were concerned about the soil type issue is that they did receive the information about the change on the consideration of soil type four and the updated map, but it was only received right before a long weekend, right before the hearing was held. It was, I believe, the fourth of July, and fourth of July came on Tuesday, and the hearing was on the Wednesday, the fifth. But I do believe, I previously had stated, I did not, was not aware that there was new information that would make it reasonable for us to reopen the public comment. I now, based on that information, think it is reasonable. But I do think we have to follow a proper process.
Yeah, I, the idea of not hearing the information is not something that I, I would prefer to hear, hear the information than not, but I would also prefer not to get bound up in some kind of issue if we noticed it properly, or if we didn't close it properly. And I think that sticking to the rules is probably the appropriate thing here, and I would I think that I'm going to have to not allow this testimony and encourage you to give this testimony to the Board of County Commissioners, because the planning commission's record is closed. And if we reopen to back up, that would be a noticing issue, and I think that's a can of worms that we don't want to jump into.
I can understand that. I just thought because it was new, I want to make sure you guys read the board that said this is nineteen sixties information, and it's going to change today, so.
I, I appreciate all those points, and I'm not even saying that you're wrong on any of that. I think that we have a procedural issue here that
I agree, I agree with that.
That I have to stick to.
Let me do something else.
All right.
The Thurston County Fair is coming up shortly. And the market sale is on Saturday evening. And that's July twenty-nine. And here, the four H and F F A kids who have been working for months raising and learning responsible behavior are going to be selling their animals. I'm told there's over twenty steers in that sale, and this is like a record for the number of ants that are going to be there. And so we're hoping that there'll be enough buyers for all those animals. Fair needs a lot of buyers out there, and if you're not going to buy, maybe your neighbor, and you can split a half of a steer or half a pig or whatever, and you can get out there and do that. Just the people that do all the butchering and stuff are right there. It's a penis process. You just go pick it up from the butcher when the time comes, it goes. You can also make donations to the kids' efforts at the fair if you don't wish to purchase an animal. This is called an add-on. You can walk to the barns before the, the, there's the auction starts, the auction starts at six, walk to the barns. The kids would love to talk to you, and you can ask them questions about their animals and ask them what they did, what they learned, whatever you want to say. And if the kid does a good job, you fill out the little add-on, give them twenty-five bucks with their name on that, and turn it into the little booth that's there. And it makes a difference for these kids. This is their time to shine, and, and you can help in that process. And then second, I passed out some, if you'd like, if you didn't get one, you can see me. The Farms Forever Dinner, which is the major fundraiser for the trust, is on August nineteenth. It's a Saturday down in Tenino at the Riverbend Ranch. Historic barn. It's all been preserved. It's a nice one, and we'd love to see you there. We have a nice program planned.
Thank you very much for coming in.
And lastly, these kids are our future farmers. So we're here tonight to meet your farmers.
Thank you. Up next, we have Chris Hadget.
I'm Chris Hadock. I'm with the Nielsen Pacific and Whole Rice Company. We operate a gravel mine in Thurston County, been operating a gravel pit for almost a hundred years. So I'm not looking to reopen public comment by any means. We've already set our public comment. I just wanted to kind of introduce who we are. We've been sitting here for a bunch of work sessions. It's still weird to not say hello until our door is open. If we can help in any way, the co-designation was obviously a big thing for us. If you can help on verbiage or any background information, we're here. Company's open. Love to give you tours, kind of helping any way we possibly can. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address the planning commission? Mr. Ruller? All right. Well, with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda.
I just wanted to point out one thing, because I think it was said several times that new information is available. I don't think there's, all the information that we have was available before the public hearing. The only thing that happened was based, I believe, based on testimony and discussion, staff delved deeper into soil types and said, oh, yes, this is correct. There are, just because it sits in this category, doesn't mean it sits in all these categories. And so that's really the only changes. We went from these soils are prime if to these soils are prime if, and these are the reasons that they might not be prime. So I don't, it's not really new information. It's just saying.
Different presentation of the same.
We can agree to disagree.
Well, I think still I would like to see a very specific policy on this at some time or another, and hopefully get to the bottom of it. In the meantime, though, I think that Commissioner Nelson's right about procedure. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number five, which is work session number four, C P A twenty-one, the Pogue site-specific land use plan and rezone amendment. And that's what Amelia is going to be. Are you presenting more to us, or are we just going to go through what we've?
I'd like to do a quick presentation for a recap.
Okay.
Um. So, hello to my fans. I'm Amelia Schwartz. I'm an associate planner with Community Planning. Tonight, we're going to do the fourth work session on C P A twenty-one, the Pogue site-specific land use plan and rezoning amendment. Today, we're going to look over our no recommendation recommendation made by the planning commission two weeks ago. And we are going to review the recommendation letter findings that we can get something that everybody's good with. Quick overview, the Pogue parcel is in Central County, southeast or southwest of Offutt Lake. Part of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three conference of Plan Docket, the property owner has requested to him in the land use of his one point five acrehood parcel from rural residential resource to neighborhood convenience commercial. On July fifth, twenty twenty-three, the signing commission recommended that no recommendation be forwarded for the B S and C on a five to two vote. There were three other recommendations that were considered by planning commissions. There was the no change, African-only, and African and neighbor. So the, last week, the draft recommendation letters that have been sent to everyone, and it included the well, as succinctly as I could get, the findings from two different commissioners that were sent to me. I didn't receive any others, so these are only for option one and option three. I didn't receive any commissioner findings for option two in my inbox. And and we can go over these. We are going to need to go through each of them. And we'll have a majority vote on each one if we want to include it in the recommendation letter. And it will not have the three different options when we send the final to the board since a single option was not chosen. So what we're going to try to do is get majority vote on what findings we want to include. No option listed because no option was chosen, and that way the board just sees the findings that the commission voted on as a whole.
Are you going to present these to the board as three options, like you presented them to us as?
They'll have to see it, yeah, but then I won't present your recommendation as any of the options since it wasn't. But yeah, they'll get to see that there were three options. They can, of course, add on, change that as they need to.
Um. I guess the thing that I'm concerned about is that the people that voted for each option are probably the ones that forwarded the findings on why they voted for that particular option or why they didn't. Or, and not why they didn't. So having the whole planning commission go through each and every one of the options seems like not, I, if it was up to me, I would just give them all the findings that we forwarded as they sit, unless somebody sees something glaringly objectionable about one of the findings. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, sorry, there's a train going by right now. But anyway, well, I didn't really have time to go back and check what I submitted. I know that in our conversation last meeting, one of the primary points that I brought up was that it's very clear that the intention of the legislature, at least, is to say that if there's not there, if there hasn't been a change in circumstances, there should not be a change in zoning, and that.
Commissioner Wheatley, that's, that's one of the things that you have listed in here is of the finding.
Oh, it, it is, because I thought, I thought it was, let me see if I can. Um. I don't think, is that in there? That if there's not a change in circumstances, there shouldn't be a change in the zoning. I don't think it made it, did that make it into the findings? I, I don't think I see it.
On this page.
Oh, maybe I've read that somewhere else. You might be right. My apologies. I'm going to get right.
Yeah, and I can, I can understand why there was a desire not to include it, because we, what we discussed was that there's a category, it, you know, I can't remember what it's administr, Mary, maybe Jeremy can explain it again. It's, it's administrative. I forget what it is, but there's some what we talked about was that this could be an administratively introduced change. I, I forget the exact terminology, but.
Um, if I may, I think you might be referring to this as being a legislative item.
Yeah.
Or it is a quasi judicial item. And that all comp plan amendments and subsequent rezones to implement those complement, comp plan amendments are actually legislative changes.
Yeah. Okay, that's what it was, legislative changes. Well, the problem with that discussion for me was that my understanding was it's, you know, it can virtually always be that. And so to my mind, that kind of undermines the intention of the legislature in, in saying as a matter of policy as, as part of the comp plan, that if there is no change, that the zoning shouldn't change. And so to me, it's still really important to tell the Board of Commissioners that this is an important principle of the comp plan and that this change goes against that. So I'd like to be able to include that as one of the findings. But I wanted to, you know, if, if anyone objects to doing that, you know, we can discuss it. But to me, that just seems like something that I want the commissioners to know was a really important principle for me was that if, you know, on top of all these other things, if you, why, why even bother to have a comp plan if you're just going to decide not to follow it when there are so many reasons why it should be followed in this case?
Does it, would anybody have an objection to inserting this additional finding that Commissioner Wheatley has brought up? Would it be terribly difficult to add in one more finding that?
Can, can we figure out how we want that finding to be phrased?
Commissioner Wheatley, you want to provide some suggestion?
Yeah, okay, I didn't, yeah, I don't.
Notes right here.
Yeah, if you have the notes, because I don't have them in front of me. I had a long day today.
Just the entire three lines?
Um, well, the gist of it, which is that Um, well, the gist of it, which is, uh, that, you know, the, it's a principle of the comprehensive plan that uh, in, in this case, that if there's, you know, for, for this kind of rezone, if there's no change in circumstances, there should be no change in zoning.
But this is the one that has the part D, if it's a legislative reason, which it is, so that would only be including half of that information to the board.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying if the, if the, my fellow commissioners would like to discuss it, but that's what I would like to put in because I think it's important for the county commissioners to know this, to know that that's the principle. Um, so.
If there, there's a big if in there that is if the circumstances haven't changed and, and haven't changed since when? Since the zoning was last made what it is? And I don't have information about when it was zoned, the way it's zoned and imagining it was long enough ago that circumstances probably have changed depending on how we how we qualify that. Um, so I, I, I mean, this opens up a whole bunch of discussion.
Well, I mean, specific to the parcel, um, is, I mean, and especially, I mean, to me, uh, especially when what we're doing is going in the opposite direction of what the comp plan calls for, you know, we're actually adding another parcel in there to make it consistent. And so we're in order to make it consistent in one way, we're actually recommending being very inconsistent with the basic principle. Um, so, you know, I personally have heartburn with that. I may be the only one who does, but.
Commissioner Wheatley, would, would you like to make a, a motion to insert the finding and the finding would be the second half of what you had there? Is that correct?
Yeah, it, it's like, it partially includes an excerpt from the comprehensive plan and whether I think to just make sure that we're referencing it correctly, either a lips or the whole provision, all of policy ten.
Commissioner Pestinger?
Um, you asked each of the groups, we had this very divided vote, three for one, two for one, two for one. You asked each of the groups, submit your information. They submitted it. Some of it was included, some of it was not. We didn't make any motions to include or not include things. If she submitted it already and it's not included, it ought to be included.
So it is included.
It would be at the voting of three, those three who voted for it.
I do have the entire goal, which includes the, the sections that Helen sent, you know, which is why I didn't put it in here because it is already in the staff report and it will be going before the board in entirety.
It's just not in that particular finding.
Yes, because it's already in the find, in the staff report.
Commissioner Day?
I mean, would it suffice and would it be accurate just to say that it's inconsistent with the comp plan? In that first option?
So.
I mean, that's kind of your point, isn't it, Helen? And that would fit with the other, the size of the other bullets in detail.
Yeah, um, well, I, I think it's inconsistent with the comp plan. Yeah.
Do we want to?
I think there's a disagreement here about that.
Uh, I, since, since we didn't come to any particular recommendation anyways, I don't think we need to have an, an agreement for any particular one finding. I think if there's just a couple of people that want that finding in there to go forward to the board, I am, I am very okay with that.
It's almost like a minority report.
Almost like that.
Everybody's.
Yeah. So I think if we can, if we could just put a finding in there that it's not consistent with the current comp plan, that would not give me one bit of heartburn. Would it give anybody else heartburn?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, if, I mean, if we're saying it's not consistent because the comp plan says that if there's not a change, there shouldn't be a change in zoning. I mean, if we can make it clear that that's what we're, what I'm wanting reference there in the findings. So that, you know, it's not, I mean, I also, yeah, I think it's, there are a lot, I mean, obviously the no change argument is saying that to change it would be inconsistent with the comp plan. I just want a bullet in there that explains that really, a really important principle of the comp plan is that there shouldn't be changes in zoning, uh, to, you know, in this, uh, kind of zoning, um, unless there's a, a change and there hasn't been a change.
I thought you had something on that.
Oh, I was just, I mean, you, I think that that makes sense. You could just say, fine, that it's inconsistent with policy ten A. Um, because circumstances haven't substantially changed or does not meet the intention of policy ten A and just have it be very specific.
And I will add that, uh, the findings under option one here, we do already pull out a piece of that specific policy for, uh, here, the applicant does not provide a statement explaining how the redesignation promotes the general welfare of the community. That's one portion of that same policy. So calling out the other sub clause that the property has not substantially changed would be a fine finding for us to add in this section.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I guess my point is that we don't know how much has changed, uh, in that area since it was designated as RR one to five. Um, how many additional, uh, population, what's the additional population in that area over the previous years? Uh, there was a, a property that on that same little triangle that was, had construction on it and put in a commercial building. When did that happen? Was it after RR, RR one to five zoning? Uh, the, the hearings, uh, examiners have consistently ruled in favor of uh, these types of parcels being used for this purpose. They've not ruled against it in any case that I'm familiar with. Um, so, I mean, y'all know where I stand on this, either option two or option three, but I think it is consistent. Uh, it has been consistent with hearing examiners and in designating these type of parcels, uh, in the past, even though we've had the same comp plan uh, in existence during the period of time, we're hearing examiners have made these rulings. So I don't know that it's, uh, I don't know. I, I just.
I don't want to, I don't want to relitigate the whole thing because when we need five and the best we got for any one was three, I don't think we're going to get to five on any of them. So adding in this, uh, extra finding that um, Commissioner Wheatley identified, I think is appropriate, and I think we should move forward with that.
Well, I mean, I think it's okay as long as we include the whole thing. Because one of the statements is unless it's a legislative, which this obviously is, which to me cancels that out.
Yeah, it is an or option rather than and.
So.
Can, can you incorporate what Scott has in there then too?
I'm not sure how to do that succinctly because it's quite different opinion. So if you guys understand a way that you want to phrase this that hits both Helen and Scott's positions, I can put it in, but I'm not sure how to phrase it and get your full intention.
Well, I, my argument is I think it should not be in at all because so I'll, I'll go this way. If we don't want to put the whole thing in, it should not be in at all because it is not a finding of fact. It is an opinion that it doesn't meet that. But the finding of fact is that it does, even if it doesn't meet that criteria, if it's a legislative decision, it's okay.
I think Scott's point.
It's well taken.
Essentially moots the original premise because it is a legislative action.
Commissioner Pestinger, did you have more?
Yeah, I, I think that's not entirely true. I think that, uh, first off, I think Commissioner Data described it well in that these are three different minority reports. And those that voted for that choice ought to be the ones writing those minority reports. And if someone wants to write their feelings about this topic in their minority report, that makes perfect sense to me. Um, Commissioner Wheatley has requested that we not put her opinion in there, but that we put the facts that this is what it says. And we're talking about, there's not enough space to put that. Let's make space. Let's make the slide bigger. Let's make it a two-page slide. Um, but what's being requested to be in there, in there. Um, and then additionally, I would also request that we add the phrase to, as a separate item that this lot, uh, majority of the lot is made up of mature standing trees, which was also in Commissioner Wheatley's recommendations, but it's not included here as far as I can see.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know how much detail we have to get into. I think that the board will be able to see and will hear from everybody that there are trees or there's it's shown up in our report probably is not going to be anything novel to them. Um, I, I
That's fine.
I do like the idea, so I do like the idea that everybody gets to say what they want to say. And maybe the way to solve this is is Commissioner Wheatley's finding a fact is that it doesn't match the comp plan because there hasn't been a substantial change. And then Commissioner Nelson's finding would be, but it doesn't need to, because this is a legislative um, request. And as such, both of those can still make it in.
That would work. I will say that I think my preference would be, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job here of just kind of laying out findings. And I think if we have, if we have the appearance of essentially like arguing about findings, I think up until now, it doesn't really seem like we have at all. Like, none of these are mutually exclusive. And I would prefer that we not add some that kind of like cancel each other out and make us look like big green, like already reports. I don't think it helps anybody's case.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, Maya, um, proposed, uh, I think it was Maya. I mean, the, the language saying it's not consistent with, what was it, ten A?
Yeah, and, and I do have a suggestion on that. So we could phrase the finding as this option is inconsistent with sub criteria ten A in the comprehensive plan because the property has not, the conditions on the property has not substantially changed. And then for option two and three, the, the finding could be the proposed change is consistent with policy ten because it is a legislative rezone under sub criteria D. Um, those are the kind of the two different pieces that I'm seeing of that. Uh, but we would have to spell it out and we can certainly do that in the findings report.
I like that. Outside of Commissioner Day's, um, observations, uh, I don't know how to work around that one.
And, and I, if I may just follow up, I mean, um, uh, Commissioner Passenger raised the fact that I had also talked about the trees and, you know, um, I don't know, it's, uh, sometimes I don't feel good about the process, I guess I would say, because I feel like I, I, um, I do the work, you know, um, and I, I make a comment and I put it in writing and I submit it. And somehow it gets edited out or disappears. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, I appreciate that Commissioner Passenger raised it because I was thinking about it. I don't want to, you know, um, uh, raise every little thing and interrupt the flow of the process, but I'd say this is one of, you know, I, I do sometimes feel like, um, there's a little over editing perhaps, or that, uh, um, I, I just feel a little frustrated that my voice isn't entirely coming through and I, you know, I don't know what to, uh, say about that. Um, but at the very least, I want to reemphasize that if I'm saying I want to put something in findings, I don't appreciate being told, uh, that, you know, unless there's a really solid reason not to, that because there's a different opinion that they cancel each other out, therefore it shouldn't be in there. I don't think that's appropriate. Um, I think if proponents of option three want to put a different finding or, you know, or refine what they feel is the finding, that's okay. But I don't think it's okay to say, let's not put it in there because, you know, my opinion cancels out your opinion. Um, you know, this is always, you know, because often I, you know, I, I do a lot of the minority writing here. And, uh, for the most part, I appreciate that my voice is heard, but I don't always feel that way. So I just wanted to register that.
Um, Chair, um, if I might add, um, when we present these to the board as the planning commission findings or discussion points on each one of these options, we could phrase one as planning commissioner supporting option one, no change, have these findings. Planning commissioner supporting option two, have these findings and planning commissioner supporting option three, have these findings in their discussion. And that would be a way to include what could possibly be looked at as opposing findings in the report out to the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of, well, with the no recommendation going forward.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot. I, I kind of assumed that's how that was going to go forward, having sat through a couple of board briefings before. Um, you guys have done a really good job with trying to uh, present everybody's opinions to the board. So, um, I appreciate that. Uh, this one's a little bit contentious though.
It is. I completely understand. And I do ask that in the future, if we do do this again, that we do get those, um, findings in writing from planning commissioners ahead of time.
Yeah.
You know that Amelia tried very hard to get all of the ones that she received into the document tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't think that, that there's going to be a way for us to, um, take into consideration Commissioner's Day. I, Commissioner Day's idea of not having conflict in our findings because our findings are going to have conflict.
I don't think they had to. I, I think honestly, it's just like a strategy. It's, I don't, I honestly think that it's going to get, it's an idea that's going to get shot down so fast because of the subsection D, that it's not smart, but it undermines credibility of the rest of. It would be my, that's just.
I, I, I don't disagree. I, I don't disagree.
I'm new for.
But I also don't want anybody to, uh, not feel like they have their say. Um, I think we're at the point then that we add both those findings in for option one. And then for option two and three, the findings that Commissioner Nelson pointed out.
So by both you mean the, this option is inconsistent or this uh, proposal is inconsistent with land use chapter, uh, goal ten A. Um, and I'll make it sound nicer. Um, and then there's a mature Santa trees. Mm-hmm. Okay. And then and yeah, I, I did try to, to get everything I could and also make sure I wasn't just repeating a lot of stuff in the staff report. Uh, like it goes, understand it is a balance. Um, so mature Santa trees inconsistent with ten A for.
Option one.
So we're wanting to keep the options because this is different than the guidance I've received today.
And for option two and three, that it does meet comp plan goals because it's a legislative rezone request.
Okay.
Is that the way you'd want to word that, Commissioner Nelson?
It's not that it meets the goals, it's that it's allowed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then it's, yeah.
So the proposed change is consistent with ten D is going to go under both option two and option three?
It's permissible under ten D.
Yeah, sorry, did I phrase?
I think permissible is the, is what it actually is.
Yeah.
Okay. So you, you say, say permissible rather than consistent?
Yeah, I use the word permissible.
Sounds good.
Is there any further discussion on POG?
I just think, you know, it's to me, it's goal ten. A, B, C, D, E, whatever, however it goes is part of that. If you meet one of those, you meet goal ten. You can't say, I mean, can't say, you know what, Scott, you owe Derek twenty dollars every morning unless you call him by six AM. And if I call him ever, you can't tell me I owe him twenty dollars if I call him every morning at quarter to six. You know? I mean, it's, I, quite frankly, to say ten A stands alone, I believe is dishonest. And I think to say ten E stands alone is dishonest. It is an entire section.
I, I, I don't disagree. We're going to get there.
And if I might add, that actually is consistent with how we've interpreted that policy in the past. And if it makes one of those, it can move forward. We did have a discussion and analysis of this back in the day when we, another controversial land use plan amendment, and it was brought forward that it was a legislative amendment that was brought forward. amendment that was brought forward. Um, and so that was permissible, if I might add, sir.
I imagine that staff during the briefing will explain all that once again to the board as well. Am I correct? Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, um, just as a, as a point of, um, I don't know what we call it. If, if I was just being told that I was being dishonest, I don't appreciate that.
I will concur with Commissioner Wheatley and say, the point she actually wrote doesn't say anywhere to put this is inconsistent. It says, say what the document says the goal is. List them all. That's what her recommendation was.
I, I think we're there with what we have now though, aren't we?
Uh, my phrasing did say this proposal is inconsistent with 10A. So are you, the Commissioner Passenger, are you wanting me to change that?
Yeah.
Did you have a different phrasing?
The policy states and list the entire policy. As Scott has mentioned.
So we just would, just repeating the finding just in its entirety with just with no commentary or just as the finding as its own?
But this is what the policy states the goal is.
And then they can see A, B, C, D on their own.
Yeah.
Scott, do you have something?
No, that's that's fine by me. If we, if we include the entire policy. Instead of saying, this group's going to take policy 10 and say this. And this group's going to take policy 10 and use a different part of it to say this. I, I mean, I think I agree with Derek, it kind of is saying that we're kind, we're trying to play with this. We're, just put policy in.
Right, I'll copy and paste that off the staff.
Amelia, did you need any more from the planning commission on this to move forward?
Is everyone, obviously I'll remove the highlighted sections, um, but is everyone good with the rest of the findings that are here? Um, and then I guess I will try to figure out where I will put this finding that applies to all three. Maybe I'll just repeat it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that.
Chair? I, I used it. I mean, I'm fine with that, but I'm not fine with, uh, I guess the loss of decorum in my opinion. So I just want to register that. I mean, we've had this issue of decorum come up before, um, and, um, it applies to commissioners speaking with other commissioners as well as commissioners speaking with staff, and I'm just gonna leave it there.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we're gonna move on to agenda item number six. Which is work session number four on long-term agricultural zoning update with, we'll have Maya and Ashley working on this one for us. Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you, commissioners. Sorry, I'm struggling to find my unmute button once my screen is already shared. Um, Maya Tople here tonight with Ashley Arrai. We're, uh, talking again tonight about the long-term agriculture rezone project. And this is our fifth work session tonight and our second or third work session after a public hearing. So, uh, summary, today we'll provide a summary of the decision points the planning commission has already made on this project. And we'll talk about the decision points that are still left for the planning commission and then the next steps for the project. So a quick summary on our July 5th work session, the planning commission made a couple of really great, uh, recommendations on separate pieces of this project that we're going to move forward with. And just to summarize those, we, uh, received from the planning commission recommendation to delay the cluster requirement discussion for further consideration with the periodic update. And, uh, findings associated with that are that, uh, we'll take holistic review with the periodic update, consider density bonuses. And in, uh, correlation with the housing updates that will be going on as parting that, part of that. We also received recommendation from the planning commission to exclude existing mines that are already in place from the agricultural resource designation. So we will make that effective in the new planning commission recommendation map or maps. We did receive a thumbs up to move forward using a refined soils list. We do have some more discussion today about, uh, further refinements on that. So that's not a completely closed part of the conversation. And then, uh, finally thumbs up to investigate the farmlands of statewide importance further as part of the comprehensive plan periodic update. We'll have a little bit more flexibility on different tools we can look into for conservation, potentially creating new agricultural zones. And how the farmlands of statewide importance trickles in, um, to the broader ag zoning and comp plan. So remaining decision points for the planning commission tonight, we do have tonight as our last planned work session. I've held August 2nd as a backup date, but just so the planning commission is aware in order for us to keep this project on track and respond to the appeal, we need to have an open house in mid to late August and then, um, we have our board briefing towards the end of August. So delay beyond August 2nd will really be, um, pushing this project, uh, out, which is fine if the planning commission needs that time. But, uh, that's kind of the remaining time we have to discuss items if we want to keep it on track for this year. So remaining decision points that we'll talk about today, the first is limiting accessory mining uses to non-prime soils. Uh, recommendation on code changes to increase flexibility and clarify standards for agricultural operators. And then several decision points on the agricultural designation criteria. And these decision points are really what determine how the maps look like. So the refined soils list is one piece of that conversation. And then we have a couple of other criteria. Like what is the percent of prime soils that must be on a parcel? What is the minimum predominant parcel size? And what is the block size requirement? And we'll walk through each of these, Ashley and I. So, uh, starting with the code designation piece, I'll go through this and then we'll have a short discussion, um, and then we can move forward. So again, at the last meeting, the planning commission gave a thumbs up on excluding existing mines from the agricultural resource designation and any new lands that get added. And I did pull the numbers. So the new map series that we presented on July 5th that has the smaller acreages that is based on the refined soils list. And how much mineral resource lands actually overlap with those, um, with those maps. It's relatively small. So for the scenario X, which mirrors the baseline, it's about a hundred and twenty-five acres. Uh, scenario Y is around two hundred and twenty acres. And then scenario Z is around fourteen hundred acres and that corresponds to five percent, ten percent and almost twenty percent, depending on which scenario. So as the acreage goes up in the scenario, you have more and more overlap with mineral lands. And just to show you what that, um, sorry, Commissioner Wheatley, go ahead. You're muted.
Commissioner Wheatley, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm having trouble computing that. Somehow I missed, so what are this, could you explain again what the scenarios are referring to that it would cause the, the, so in other words, remind us of what the scenarios are X, Y, and Z and why that is it just because there's just more acreage under Z? And is that the parcel size? I forget. Is that the parcel size scenarios?
Yeah, and I do go through that at the end of the presentation. Maybe it's helpful if I click through it really quickly right now, um, just so you can see it visually, but, uh, this is scenario X on the right side here. It's about twenty-four fifty acres. And the criteria here are fifty percent prime farmland soils, a block size of two hundred to three hundred and twenty acres and a parcel size of at least twenty acres. Scenario Y, uh, pretty close to the same total acreage, but different criteria. We have twenty-three hundred acres on this one. It requires a parcel have seventy-five percent or more prime farmland soils. A hundred acres or more for a block size criteria. So that's reduced. And then the parcel size is twenty acres. And then scenario Z is the most laxed on those criteria, um, aside from soils threshold. So that's seventy-two hundred acres. This is on the right side here. Again, seventy-five percent or more prime farmland soils and the block size reduced down to at least forty acres. And a parcel size reduced down to fifteen acres. So, um, as you see the acreage go up in these options, you see more overlap with mineral lands. And, um, just to look at this map, the blue and the orange is our mineral, our designated mineral lands. It's based on the underlying rock resources. And we had a consultant complete that back in twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. It's not a zone. It's not a zoning district, not a land use designation. Um, so the underlying zoning doesn't change. So as you see more, um, land eligible to be rezoned to agriculture, there's gonna be more overlap with these areas. And in this map, I used the scenario Z. So this shows, um, of the new series that the planning commission looked at. The one that has the, um, seventy-two hundred acres. And I, for simplicity sake, I only used that as a screenshot because that had the most new acreage of that new series. Go ahead.
Yeah. So can we ask questions? I mean, would you prefer that, you know, if we wanted to ask questions about the mineral lands part, that we do that now and then move on to the next thing?
Yeah, I think we should, um, break up the conversation. So we discuss mineral lands after I get through the couple of slides. I only have one or two more slides. And then, um, we'll move to the soils and we can talk about that. I think that'll be the easiest way.
Okay, because I do have a question or two, so.
Mm-hmm. And if you have questions on the map that you'd like me to go over with right now, I'm happy to answer those while we're on the slide. Um, so what you're seeing here, the pink is the new possible long-term ag. This lime green is our existing long-term ag. And then again, the blue and the orange is our designated mineral lands. And you can, it might be pretty difficult to see on the projector, but the darker areas are kind of the areas of overlap. And it, it does mostly occur on the fringe of long-term ag parcels, but not exclusively. There are some areas where you get a whole piece of long-term ag that's covered by designated mineral lands. And so one of the things to keep in mind with this consideration is that land zoned for long-term ag and designated mineral resources does not need to be used for that. Um, it can be used for that. In the case of agriculture, that can occur in zones outside of LTA. Uh, but in the case of mining, it needs to be in this blue or orange area. It cannot occur in lands that are off of those areas unless it's an already existing mine that's been permitted before this was ever in place. So, um, it, it's kind of, uh, preclusive for the mineral land side of that. And just taking a closer look, this is an example of how the code designation looks where it overlaps. So the map on the left, the dark green shows prime farmland soils. That's most of this that you see right here. Again, the blue and the orange is the designated mineral lands. And the pink is the long-term ag. And so when we designate long-term ag, because it is a zoning district, it covers the whole parcel. We don't, we don't split zone on those based on where the prime farmland soils falls. But you can see that the whole parcel probably isn't going to have prime soils on it. And likewise, the whole parcel isn't gonna have mineral resources on it. And some of those areas actually don't overlap. So you could, this is what we heard in our stakeholder group, that you could have s- situations where a property owner wants to do both. And we've actually seen that in Thurston County. We have some ag operators that do both, um, on the same property. So under our current policy, the accessory uses would need to occur off of the long-term ag parcel. They couldn't occur on this parcel at all. And, uh, some of the suggested policy changes would change that language to limit it so it can't occur on where prime soils are located. Uh, moving forward, we do have criteria in our code language, and this was done with the last mineral lands update. That there must be soil surveys for lands that are code designated for agriculture. So we'll have a pretty good idea of where those prime soils are on the property. The mining operator will have to do those before they can get a permit to mine. Um, so, so it's very feasible that they can easily cite their accessory uses off of those prime soils with a policy language like that. And we do have a discussion for PC's consideration tonight. Um, the, the ask is if the planning commission wants to consider revising policy language. Currently, that policy language requires that accessory uses, uh, occur on lands that are not code designated. So if a land is zoned for long-term ag and has mineral lands, they can mine on it, but they have to cite their accessory uses off of that property, which could mean they have to pull in an entire another parcel, uh, in order to do their accessory uses. The suggested revisions would align with the code designation policy intent, but it still ensures the protection of those underlying farm, farmland soils because the language would, um, preclude prime farmland soils from, uh, having accessory uses for mining on it. And, uh, yeah, this, this is something that is based on the public comments that we received from some of the mining operators. And so I will check in with the planning commission on questions and open it up for discussion on this decision point.
Anybody have any strong opinions on any of this? Well, I guess I, I'll just start and say that I think that putting the accessory uses farther and farther away from those mineral beds sounds like a bad idea. Keeping those accessory uses as close to those mineral beds as possible um, seems way more efficient. And I think that the damage that would be done by trying to move those aggregates across soils to get to accessory uses would do more damage than just putting the accessory uses right next to those aggregate beds. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, um, I had a question about another, well, first of all, it was interesting, Maya. Um, you know, you sort of raised the point that in a lot of scenarios, the, the landowner is the same landowner who's wanting to do both. So there's kind of two different possible scenarios. There's one where the the ag land user is, uh, next to the mineral land user. Or it can be the same user. And I was looking, um, at how Oregon approached, uh, its zoning because Oregon, um, even though its land use policies, uh, you know, American Farmland Trust doesn't rate its, its, uh, land use policies as being as strong as the state of Washington's. Um, it does have some interesting wrinkles. And one of the things that they do, and I'm wondering if it would be possible, because we're not really talking about that much land. Um, but it would sort of protect the interests of both is, um, they have, and I, I didn't write it down exactly, but they have language that says that for mineral lands, for the use of mineral lands, or maybe just in general, I can't remember, but you can add LTA land. And that they have a different phrase for that too, but you can count land that isn't based on soil, but it's based on the need of the farmer to be able to access or use their land. So even if it isn't prime soil, it's necessary, you know, that for them to actually farm it, they kind of need to have this land, this little piece of land too. And I'm wondering if it could be made really, really specific. You know, or if there'd be any benefit to it, because we're talking about, you know, fairly small area and it's not that hard to know where there might be a potential conflict and whether just a little bit of language about, um, uh, just making sure that the ag user is able to act, you know, that, that they are assured that they will actually be able to, um, use their ag land efficiently. Do, do you know what I mean? Do you get, sort of get the point? So it's not based on soil type, but maybe a little, a bit of a workaround. You know, might be to say it's just whatever land is needed to be able to do the, do the farming.
I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Wheatley, and I think that some of the code changes that we're making reconcile some of that. We could certainly I can look into Oregon and see if we can include some policy language about that. We're gonna have situations where the land is designated for both and not used for either. And someone may want to come in and do it for mining. So I would have to work on language that, you know, accommodates those types of situations, but I can certainly look into adding a policy around that.
I, I guess I didn't understand exactly what kind of policy you're looking for. I got lost in the explanation.
Well, it's just that sometimes it's soil type isn't always necessarily the most important thing. I mean, what we're really trying to do is make Well, it's just that sometimes it's soil type isn't always necessarily the most important thing. I mean, what we're really trying to do is make sure that ag you, you know, if the land is to be used for ag, that that can be maximized. Um, so, so, you know, in addition to soil type, another thing you can say is that you can also include as LTA land, land that uh, the farmer needs in order to be able to do their agriculture, even if it isn't the prime soil.
I, I don't, I guess I don't understand why that needs to be in a policy.
Well, it's just, I, I'm just suggesting that that be um, that that might solve any potential conflicts between the, in that scenario where you have an ag user next to a mineral lands user. Not, not somebody who's got both and is doing both, but somebody who is next to the mineral lands. And that soil, I'm just saying soil type may not always get to the main point, which is um, that the, the ag user wants to be able to, you know, that there shouldn't be any barriers to the ag user doing their farming.
Other than ownership of the land?
Uh, well, I, I don't know. I'm just talking about the soil type issue.
I, I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Wheatley say is that if we do revise the policy language to accommodate accessory uses on long-term ag uh, parcels to include an additional policy that has some assurance that even the prime, even though the prime farmland soils are protected to a higher level, that the remainder of the long-term ag parcel is available for those accessory agricultural uses and access and tractor storage and things like that. Those uses that are not reliant on those underlying soils. And we do specify in our code um, what types of uses fall into that. And sometimes there are special uses, maybe a property owner wants to have on their long-term ag parcel. So I certainly, I, I'm hearing your concerns and I think that um, that's certainly an additional policy we can add if the planning commission uh, is warm to that.
I guess I don't understand the need, because if it's my property, I'm probably not going, I mean, if I am going to interfere with my ability to for ag, it's going to be a decision that I make. If it's not my property, then I sure hope that my neighbor doesn't have property that affects my ability to do farming on my property. So I just don't see where, I mean, I think there, I don't think there's a conflict there.
I don't see how the conflict would arise either, and I, I would prefer not to push this into yet another work session if we don't have to.
Right, it's just a question of allowed uses in the long-term ag zoning, right? There's nothing that would keep them from doing accessory farming uses.
No, essentially be like an, an additional use that would be allowed. Um, just like you would, you know, they're wanting to add other agricultural support services and whatnot in the code update. This is just at a policy level.
I, I, it was my understanding that Commissioner Wheatley wasn't looking for an allowed, but to um, mandate.
Well, I mean, that's, I, I mean, I was just bringing it up, because yeah, it's something, I mean, and, and I see this being really under very limited circumstances, but um, it's just that, you know, maybe by not locating the binder, by not locating their accessory use on prime soil on their own land, they might end up locating it somewhere where it's, makes complications for the landowner next door. But, you know, I don't know. I'm just saying, it's something to think about. Um, you know, soil type isn't the on, the only necessarily only.
It sounds like a trespass issue, not an LTA issue.
Wow, okay.
It gets dusty. Create a lot of dust that lands on your crops.
Well, I guess I should ask, is there uh, support from the rest of the planning commission to, for Commissioner Wheatley's proposal?
I'm just not sure I fully understand it.
Could, could we circle back to, I'm just looking at the clock and I'm worried that there are a lot of other pieces, decision.
I don't want to hold it up.
Well, I, I don't think we're getting the support for it anyway, so I don't know if I'll need to circle back, but we can move on to the next item.
If that's all right. I'm just like, oh no, that's a small one compared to all the really big ones.
Does that leave us at the decision on whether or not to um, allow mining uses on non-prime soils? Is that where we're at then?
That would be the uh, revision to the policy that we have in front of the planning commission um, to begin with, yes.
What do you, what do you need? I mean, I was looking at the motion or discussion.
A thumbs up from the majority of the planning commission would suffice if there's a majority thumbs up. Okay.
There it is.
There we go. I'll revise that policy then. Thank you.
So next, class four soils, refined soils list. So there was general agreement to use refined soils list based on the land capability classification system that is um, something that is an option for the planning commission under state law. And so tonight, we're really digging into, as, as I mentioned last, um, last time, there aren't a lot of soils. Um, in the, in the options um, that you currently have in that class five to class eight category. So it's really just a drill down into those class four soils. Um, kind of recapping here, um, what those class four soil characteristics are. So if you recall, there's the classification, the land capability classification, and that's the one through eight scale. In addition, you have these subclasses that describe limitations or hazards associated with those soils. So you've got W for essentially water wetness, and then the S is for soil limitations. And so um, the class four W soils, um, it's really difficult to sort of quantify um, how much of these soils exist in any particular scenario or what the impacts would be. But just for a barometer, um, the class four W soils in the original baseline, the one that had twenty-two thousand acres represented about fifteen percent of that overall acreage, just to give you a sense of scale. Um, it encompasses soil types that are really characterized as seasonally wet woodlands. I mean, they're, they're actually primed drained and primed irrigated. So they're seasonally wet, they're also seasonally dry. Um, it also includes um, parcels that may contain wetlands. And what we heard in public comment is that a lot of that land um, contained priority habitat for Oregon spotted frog. I do want to point out that in our, in the county's new habitat conservation plan, there is a four D rule for continued agricultural operations. It's kind of like an, an exception um, would say for, you know, your, your standard farming practices. That does not exist for the Oregon spotted frog. Um, the county is still trying to secure mitigation sites. Um, and pretty much anyone that comes in with a proposal um, that has any kind of OSF habitat, we've got to go through that process of mitigating it on that site. Um, so having said that, there is more limited agricultural use, especially in those wetland areas. Um, and that would really just be focused on the dry season. It's not that it can't take place. Conservation districts doing great work, although they have a whole farms and frogs program. But it's, it's really farming in service to conservation in those areas with that OSF habitat. Then we've got the class four S soil. So these are mostly the prairie soil, like the prairies. Um, it was the largest representation and um, compared to the four Ws in the baseline acreage at about twenty-six percent. Um, these are your stoner soils prone to drought. Um, this, this soil type does contain a lot of that priority habitat for at least five of the species listed in the habitat conservation plan. There is a four D rule in existence for ag. Um, so agricultural operations can continue on these soils. They don't have the same limitations that we have necessarily for the OSF. But it's just agricultural activities. You can't build buildings without mitigation. You can't put in facilities without mitigation. So think like heavy use area, manure storage shed. That's going to require mitigation um, in areas that contain these habitats. I'm just highlighting some of the limitations. It doesn't mean that all this acreage has this impact. Um, having said that, because they are priority habitats, um, they are, they're, they are being conserved through a number of different programs. Um, so we've got the habitat conservation plan. We've got Sentinel Land, which is the program run by Joint Base Lewis McCord to mitigate for their impacts um, to the prairie habitats. And then there are other state and federal prairie conservation efforts. Um, and I, if you have anything to add, Commissioner Day, I see you. Like, you might know more, especially about OSF stuff. Um, so that's just sort of a general characterization of the two soil types. Um, this is really, this is really tough to do. The soil survey was not written to support local policy decisions for zoning. So in terms of like trying to, trying to do research and provide you with information that's helpful, um, it's just hard, I'll be honest, it's hard. Um, so this is kind of the, the best characterization I could pull together. I also looked at crop productivity ratings, um, and the individual um, like capability classifications for different crops. It's difficult to display it all in one place, because all of those ratings assume drainage, but they don't assume irrigation. So if you see everything in a list, you know, a, a ranking or rating, the four Ws look like they're amazing, but they assume drainage. And then the four Ss would know irrigation off at the bottom. I will say that um, class one through three soils do have higher um, higher capabilities um, on average across the board than your class fours, especially, I focused in on pasture since we talked a lot about livestock. Um, and then same with the, the natural commodity crop productivity ratings. Um, the forests, forests do worse than the class ones through threes. Um, the only other piece um, I can leave you with in terms of having a discussion about this is that um, when Pierce County went through this process, they excluded the steeper four S soils. They didn't exclude all of them. Um, they didn't, they don't have as much as we have. Um, they don't have the prairie habitat we have, but they excluded all of their steep or Ss. Um, and that totaled about seventy-one thousand acres that they excluded from consideration. So yes, questions?
Uh, uh, well, I see state, federal prairie conservation efforts. We don't include the acreage from JBLM or the state uh, capital forest lands in our figures. Okay.
Did you have something? Does anybody else have any feelings on these class four soils?
So the scenario is that your X, Y, Z excluded, excluded these. So the numbers you see in X, Y, Z exclude these soils. I guess the conversation is whether you want to add any of those back in um, as this moves forward as a recommendation to the board.
Go ahead. I, I would like to hear some discussion around adding in the class four S soils. Um, because I, I think that in cases that I'm aware of, and I will refer to our, our esteemed colleague. Um, but people are raising livestock on these soils in our county. And, and so they are operating as farmland, have been for a very long time.
Yeah, and I, I will say they're not all created equally, and Commissioner Nelson can potentially attest to this. But the, the, the two big soil ser- series are like the Spanaway and Spanaway-Nesqually and the Indianola's. And if you look at the Indianola's in comparison, which Spanaway's there, their ratings are quite a bit lower. Um, so I will, I will say that, that if you incl- if you do choose to include the four Ss, might even might even be some, not all. Um, there's more acreage in the Spanaways than the Indianolas, but I just want to be.
So we could get more granular than just.
Potentially, if, if, yeah, if there was, you know, wanting, if, if the intention of the planning commission was to include some of the four Ss, or all the four Ss, honing in on those that are more likely being used for agriculture versus ones that are not.
I'd like to go to Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, there are other jurisdictions that do hone in like that. So we shouldn't feel like that's not a, that's not an option for us because other jurisdictions have done that. Um, they do, I, I can't name them, but I, you know, I did some research and some do. And the state of Oregon, um, their counties often uh, specify within that four category um, specific soils. Um, I am absolutely opposed to not including uh, class four soils, because every, everything that I've looked at for other jurisdictions, I've never seen only going up to class three. It's all, it's, if they talk about the classes, they always include at least some part of class four soils. So we, we have to do that. Um, and, and so, um, as Commissioner Hanson said, I mean, we, it is not that hard to um, to sort of hone in on um, the class four soils that actually do serve an agricultural purpose. And we are supposed to be, you know, this LTA um, is supposed to be about um, predominant, um, you know, I, I for, or uh, I forget the exact terminology, but you know, it's supposed to cover a predominant amount of the farmland that's actually farmed. Um, so I think it's really important to include these class four soils. Uh, and there are, you know, complex soil complexes that are particularly appropriate. And I'm having, I guess, I'm having a little trouble with the idea of saying we shouldn't include certain categories or um, that we should, while we're thinking about LTA, that we should be saying, well, you know, the HCP is going to take care of it. Um, critical, critical lands, this is going to take care of it, or whatever. Um, I don't think that's a good, careful approach as a planner. Um, if we're talking about protecting land for long-term agriculture, I don't think that we can assume that other pieces are going to fit really well. And, you know, I'm speaking as somebody who has very little faith in um, the current HCP, frankly, to be very, as fully protective as, as I would like it to be. And I think that ag land plays a role in helping to protect those species. Um, but, so, anyway, so that's, I mean, I have a very strong opinion. Um, and it's based on having taken the time to look at what other jurisdictions are doing that we really should not be um, definitely not excluding class four across the board. Um, and at the very least, we should be including those that are very clearly used for agriculture.
Eric Hanson?
I, I just want to make sure that, that we all remember that what we're talking about is limiting people's use of their land, and that, that is the, the county taking something from people. And I feel they should be compensated for that. So we really should, in my opinion, be getting getting in this with a scalpel, um, and not just a broad brush. Um, so, I, I mean, I just, we, this is going to be a balancing act. Both sides of it. And, and remember that there are those two sides of this issue.
I agree, Commissioner Hanson, but I'm, what I'm saying is, I mean, it was, it was on the table to just exclude class four altogether. And so I'm saying that's really not acceptable.
Yeah, I also, I, and I'm in concurrence with that. I just, if, if land um, if we can find justifications for getting more granular and saying this is in, this is out, I think that makes sense, because at the end of the day, I think that the county needs to come up with some resources compensate people.
Right.
It's not our job, but it's going to be a difficult job.
Right, and I think, I think it's our job to take into account the fact that the county and indeed the state haven't done as good a job with that as could be done. And again, um, you know, we could certainly look to Oregon for some really good ideas. They do better at that, at, at making sure, because they're more focused on the question of helping farmers to farm. And so uh, you know, I agree that the problem here is you can't do land use planning without also uh, talking about the other, other ways that you can support farmers um, who are, who are losing something. And I don't disagree with that at all. But at the same time, I think, you know, we have a responsibility, we're looking at land use. Um, and, and we should do it um, uh, without um, without trying to, you know, I think we should listen to what the agricultural advisory committee has come up with um, and things like that. Um, but I don't think that we should take it upon ourselves to try to solve the whole puzzle. But I don't think that we should take it upon ourselves to try to solve the whole puzzle as a planning commission, you know, we're looking at.
Options for opting in with these class four soil properties, they, they could still opt in on any of this if they wanted to, couldn't they?
They, they could. And, and the act, just because the agriculture advisory committee was referenced. They, it's not like we've had this robust discussion like we've had at the planning commission, but they were the ones that pointed me to look at the land capability classification system. And that, that's when I started working with laws of extension and N R C S to figure out like, is there a more refined way to look at these soils than just kind of drained, kind of irrigated? Cause a lot of the questions were like, well, what does that mean? If you don't have irrigation, what are these soils?
Why don't we break this especially into two on the, on the steep, on the steep soils and then the wet soils? And because I think we might not have agreement across the board for all of these and we could. I'd like to start this with just the class four W soils and the discussion on that. Cause I have a, I have a lot of heartburn about forcing class four soils in that either are wetlands or they have no water. And to tell these people that the only thing they can do is farm when they have wetlands or no water, to me is egregious.
Can I, um, just another thought on that? I mean, and again, you know, this is looking at Oregon, Oregon's approach, which is a little different to the state of Washington's. You know, they really, I think they make a lot of use of the USDA, you know, what is it called? I crop or whatever, you know, that. They are much more willing to use very refined maps. And one thing that their counties do is they zone their counties based on the agriculture that actually goes on in the county. So like, you know, I think in the last census, something like four hundred and twenty or four hundred and fifty acres were definitely sort of vegetable crop land or something like that in, you know, whereas, you know, that's very different land and use to pasturage or something like that. And, and what Oregon does is they actually kind of, they don't just go by soil types, but they also kind of zone their counties or they have the option of zoning their counties based on the farming that's going on in a particular part of the county and then sort of refining it from there. So, you know, we're.
I don't think that we're going to go back and read. We're not going to search our classifications all over from scratch again though.
Well, and we're, we're not allowed to. So in Washington state, it's being used for or capable of being used for. And I actually worked in Oregon for, for, oh my God, almost ten years. I don't know. Anyway, very familiar with their statutory framework. It is a lot different. Whether that's good or bad, but it is, it is hard to look at them as a model in terms of agricultural resource designation. It's, yeah. We've just, we have, we've had different case law and we have different designation criteria.
Okay. So I want to redirect this, this conversation back to whether or not we're going to include any of these class four soils. And if so, which ones are, are we going to include? And, and focus back now on, on these ones that have water issues and get a consensus out of the planning commission, one way or the other, whether or not we're going to force these parcels that have class four, have water issues into L T A. I think Commissioner Wheatley would like to put four W's in. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know. I mean, uh, we might want to leave it as an open question for further testimony. Rather than have a recommendation on it.
Well.
I'd recommend that we leave them out.
I'd recommend we leave them out.
I, I recommend, how do you? I don't know. I'm not a farmer. I don't, can you farm on this? Can you do, and what can you do with?
Well, I mean. You could, the, the problem is you can farm on anything. What we're, what we're looking at is is a resource land and remember the term, long-term commercial significance. And, yeah, you can, I mean, you can graze cows on anything. The question is, how many cows can you graze and for how long? You know, most of the prairies around here, from my experience, is mostly used for wintering cattle, not for feeding cattle. You know, I can do it. I can put them in a barn. And have the same, have the same result. So. And obviously, obviously the four W soils, you probably can't wear cattle on, because they're going to be too wet.
So, so Scott, my question for you would be, if, if this wasn't, you know, the class force, four W soils were excluded, you'd be fine?
Yes, absolutely.
How about you fellows?
Yeah.
We, we have a majority of planning commissioners that would like to exclude class four W soils.
Okay. Well, my, you know, may I register an opinion that I would like to have had no opinion and allow for further public testimony on this matter?
All right. Now, in these, these four S soils.
Sorry, going back to four W, I would have a similar opinion, except I would like more information from staff on where that makes some sense to have a dividing line if we were to break up four W.
Those ones are, I, I will say that they're harder. It's the Alderwood series. I'm, I'm looking to Commissioner Nelson because he knows more like on the ground. Alderwood, which is forested, those, your woodland forests that are wet and dry. A lot of those were in timber use. So the folks that we heard from in public comment.
As a procedural matter, we, we have excluded four W's. And if other commissioners would like to file a minority report on the issue, they'd be welcome to do so.
Um, I, I think we're allowed to simply make a statement at a time that there, we don't have to always do minority reports. If there's a.
Part of the record, for sure.
Yeah, we can make, we can make it part of the record that, that I disagreed with that and the reason why, which is that I think I would like there to be, um, an opportunity for more public testimony on that matter.
It's noted in the record that you and Commissioner Pestinger, if anybody else wants to sign on to that, that you'd like your more public testimony, that's fine. But the, the, uh, majority of the planning commission is excluding class four W soils. Let's move on to class four S soils. Does anybody have opinions on class four S soils? Barry?
I would like to know, uh, what kind of soils in this category can be incorporated that are in agriculture right now? Do we know that?
Percent that's in agriculture. No, it's hard unless it's just those soils are mapped. I tried using the soil survey to get a better sense. And it's really difficult without having like a special.
Do we know what categories of four S soils are more prone to agriculture than others?
Commissioner Nelson, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's four main soil types, but there's only five in here. One of them doesn't have like hardly any acreage. The other four is Indianola, five to fifteen, Indianola, zero to five. Spanaway gravelly sandalum, zero to three, if irrigated, Spanaway Nisqually complex, two to 10%. Flow if irrigated. So those are the four. My understanding, at least eh, with the habitat conservation plan, that the prairies are more in your Spanaway gravelly and Spanaway Nisqually.
What percentage is that? Do we know?
I can tell you the baseline. So overall, the baseline, it was like forty eight hundred acres.
Forty eight hundred acres.
It's, it was the biggest.
Okay.
Biggest acreage.
And of that forty eight hundred acres, do we know how much of that is currently in agriculture?
Don't.
How would we find that out?
We'd have to map it. The hard part with this is that the, the criteria don't stand alone.
Okay.
So it has to be like a whole new scenario and then looking at the percentage in that scenario that is in open space ag or.
Is that something that would be worthwhile pursuing for this, uh, particular action? Or is it something that we need to consider when we're, when we're doing our comp plan?
I mean, I think for the L T zoning update, it's, it's a, it's appropriate to, to look, look into that. Yeah, I wish I had like a, a percentage, but as you noted, it's like the, the acreage that we account for, for like open space ag is parcel lines. The soiled information is not parcelized.
I think.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, um, I've, I've been asked to specifically call out Spanaway Nisqually complex and Spanaway gravelly sandy loam as being ones to definitely include. So there, there is interest in the community in those complexes in particular being included.
Can I ask Helen, what portion of the community? Is it the ag community?
Yes, it's people who have been involved with the ag advisory committee and with developing, um, the advice. On this.
A lot of times the ag advisory committee are not actually in agriculture themselves. They're other entities. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, well, so, uh, let's say that, yeah, it's somebody who knows farming.
I, I would, the other piece, in addition to what's currently being farmed, another, another hole that we continue to have is knowing which of those parcels or which of those farms or lands have access to irrigation. And that's, that's just another really, really difficult one to figure out. There, I think they, we have lands in these soils that are being used without irrigation. They're definitely way more productive.
That would be obvious, I think.
Well, again, I, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, there, there's a balancing act going on here, but the, the, the comp plan dimension of this, I mean, let's keep in mind that most farms that are economically viable according to the, the phrasing that's used by the comp plan language. There, it's, it's under, you know, you can have farms that are under, uh, that produce less than twenty five hundred dollars a year's worth of product. I mean, so, you know, there's a lot of balancing, you know, as, as Ashley has said, I mean, there's, there's tons of things that staff have to consider, um, that the ag advisory committee has considered. You know, the, the, the worry is we, we need to save farmland. We need to save farmland that farmers actually use. We shouldn't assume, you know, we can't, there are different types of farmland. And as Ashley said, that, you know, there may be complications for getting too fine-grained about that in Thurston County. But being agriculturally, you know, commercially viable, the, the, as Ashley has explained to us, the barrier is super, super low. And so we, we need to keep that in mind and keep in mind that the, the whole purpose of this is to make sure that, um, farmland that can be farmed, that this is a priority of the state and of the county, that it not be put under other kinds of pressures. And I've certainly heard what, um, you know, what, what people said. And I think there are a lot of different ways, other than the land use element where there could be a lot more support for people who are, who if this went in alone, they'd be hung out to dry. And I certainly empathize with that, but we also shouldn't cer- lose sight of, um, the purpose.
Could we, I, and I'm not saying this is the best of ideas. I just want to know if we, if it's even possible. If we took this class four S soils and we split this out like Commissioner Wheatley said, to those that are actually being used for agriculture versus those that are not being used for agriculture and make our definitions off that. And I understand that's a point in time today that might change at some point or another, but we would certainly know then, if it's being used today for agriculture, then maybe calling it L T A is not totally inappropriate.
And maybe this sounds like it might be too hard. I think maybe the alternative would be to look at which of those kind of subclassifications within the four Ss are in like higher current use agriculture. Probably too hard to parse out and use that to help direct a broader criteria. I don't know. Could we even use the current farming as a criteria for including? I don't think you can, it has to be soil.
Yeah, I think Maya, do you mind jumping in on the non-inclusive criteria, like how we might be able to layer, layer the existing or whether there's an existing ag use? I mean, I know that that's one of the reasons we want to actually create a new ag zone that isn't tied to the state's designation criteria. So we have a lot more options locally. But any insight into that, Maya, if we could combine the two, that would be four S if in current use?
So it gets harder when we're looking at it for each scenario, but I think what we can do is kind of a broader assumption without the other criteria stacked on top of that. And look at in the four S soils in Thurston County, not considering the other designation criteria, how many of those are what we would consider existing agricultural operations? And that number's not perfect. We only, we only have land use code data and crop land G I S data that feeds into that. So, um, it's, it's just kind of the best information we have to build that. But we could pull from that rough percentages of how much of those soils are used actively for farming. Now, um, that may not translate into this exact same number for existing ag operations when it's pulled into the L T A designation, because you'll have all of this other criteria stacked on top of it. But that, that would, I mean, this is already a really complicated G I S project to begin with. And to just layer all of those other designation criteria on top of it. Just to get rough estimate of numbers when these scenarios are going to change further in the process is, is going to be difficult. So rather than getting people tied to those percentages of existing operations under each op, under each option, I'd rather kind of look at it holistically in Thurston County. And then, um, that just makes an assumption of how much of those soils in the whole county are used for ag operations.
And the hard thing when you're mapping is that it could be like one percent of the site or the parcel that's in this particular soil type. It's, you know, as Maya pointed out with the map with like the mineral and the prime farmland soils, like I'm from land soils might be like a river like. And so you gotta, you gotta also build a lot into your assumptions, like what percentage of the site in this soil type do we, we take on? So, um, there's all, if you want just some insight like based on crop productivity, like the little bit I was able to, to pull. You're looking at, you know, in, in a scale of point, point one or point zero one to one. You're looking at like point five for the four S's. I don't even want to give you the four W's because they assume drainage. Point five's about halfway on that scale. If you're looking at like the class threes that are included in the new prime farmland soils list, I'll pick one that is not a W. It's like point seven. So if, if you don't have to take into consideration irrigation, um, or drainage, let's say. Looks like the class threes are point seven or higher. And the four S's are in that point five range. And none of this is perfect. But I'm just trying to give you like as much insight as possible based on numbers and nationwide analysis. Um, and then I think Commissioner Nelson can speak more to sort of on the ground stuff.
I guess I'm kind of torn between the testimony that we've heard from both sides. The side that, you know, I bought twenty or forty acres fifty years ago. And now you're changing the, uh, the zoning into L T A and you're making my property value a third of what it would be otherwise, because I can't sell twenty acres. Uh, and the other side that says we need to protect farmland and, and farmland is valuable. And if you don't designate it as L T A, then it's going to be sold in these smaller parcels and it's not going to be farmland anymore. So I've heard both sides of it about equal amounts from both ends. And I, I'm having difficulty trying to figure out the right path. Okay, cause I can, I can understand the person that's put all their money into acreage for, that's their retirement, that's their value, that's what they've got, that's their bank. Uh, and then we're saying, oh, we're going to take it away. Uh, and then we're saying, oh, we're gonna take it away, and you cannot guarantee that the government is ever going to come to their aid. With paying them for their property, uh, or their loss of value in their property. You cannot guarantee that.
Uh, so probably expected it will not.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the problem. I'm, I, I'm just, I'm kind of torn between that really bad. I just don't know how, how to deal with that.
I'm, I'm still having a really hard time forcing people into this program when they could opt in if they want to be in.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, forcing people in, especially on these lands that are not really commercially viable. Farming activities could happen and they've never farmed there, they never will farm there. The stoke, the s- uh, slopes are steep, the soil's rocky, anything like that, I. And then telling them that they can't do anything else with their land besides farm, I, that, that's a bridge too far for me. Commissioner Wheatley? I saw your hand up.
Uh, no, I mean, I, I've said my piece. Look, you know, I mean, to make us. I said earlier, you know, we're doing land use stuff here. Um, and we certainly should say very, very strongly that land use isn't the. The, uh, the best tool to help people who are having the problems that you were just talking about. Um, we need to say very strongly that the county. And, and the county should be advocating very strongly with the state and even at the federal level. That farmers need more help. They more, they, they need direct help. They need financial help. Uh, you know, we should be buying easements and all of that. Uh, we, you know, in Oregon, you know, whether it works or not, they have a, a notion at least of. Um, saying that um. Local farmers should be used for government food purchases. Um, they, they have a goal of ten percent. Um. Non-importing of, you know, that, that ten percent of food be local, and my point is that. You know, we're looking at uh, the, I, the, the, the issue put before us is preserving. Land for agriculture so that it is not, uh, it doesn't become inaccessible because it costs too much. And, and other things like that, that, that LTA is something that the legislature. Um, decided was a good tool for helping to preserve farmland and how do we do that optimally here? And, you know, we can make assumptions or not about what the state, the county. At the federal government are going to do to help farmers. And we should say that we hope that the commissioners. Um, make a very strong statement about that, about making sure that people aren't hung out to dry. But at the same time, I don't see that as um a strong enough reason. Um, to. Um, to not take seriously what has been asked of us in terms of. Um, making sure that. Land is preserved for long-term agriculture. So I'm saying, I heard those people too. I totally agree. I love that. I, I don't think we've talked enough about young farmers and the obstacles to them being able to do what they, you know, to get into it. You know, there's a million different things, but what we're looking at. Specifically is that we've been charged with looking at LTA as a tool. Um, and we need to take it seriously and, you know, I think we're doing a good job by talking about um. Not including all class four soils as some jurisdictions do. They just go to, they say one through four. You know, we're going to count it. You know, we're, we're not being that, um, you know. Broad-brushed and that's a really, really good thing. Uh, we can definitely get more fine-tuned, but I, um, I disagree. Uh, with using as a criterion for our decision-making, what we think, um, you know, whether or not. The government's gonna. Do what it should do. I mean. As a planning commissioner, I find that difficult to, to wrap my head around.
Yeah, I think I also appreciate, I think Ellen's taking a pretty rigorous and honestly principled approach to this. Um, but I think one of the. Um, questions I have, we've been using a couple of different phrases kind of interchangeably, but I think. They have specific and important meaning. We've talked about viable, commercially viable, commercially significant. We're looking for agricultural lands of. Long-term commercial significance.
Long-term, yeah. I think the viables, can you do it?
Right.
Capable versus commercially significant.
And the, for long-term agriculture, we're looking at commercially significant.
Long-term commercial significance.
Long-term.
Which I think is where the water rights piece plays into it, since it's so dynamic, you can't assume someone is necessarily gonna be able to get access to water.
Right, okay. And then I. Also, just really quickly, um, I really appreciated the analysis that you all provided last time on the different scenarios. Where it showed the, like, what was in current agriculture across those scenarios. So I think that was a good indication of like how accurate or precise um the. These different scenarios are. So the more of that that we can get, I think that gives us really good information on whether or not we're actually. Pulling in farmland that's at least in current use versus lands that aren't being used.
You know, the hard part with that analysis is that that piece, that layer that's. That's really important and interesting is the last thing we're able to do after we've run the whole analysis. Because under state law, we can't start with what's in current use and work, work our way backwards. So we really have no idea what that final number is going to be. Until we've run everything, which is why I think, and I keep coming back to this idea during the comp plan update. If we have a zoning district like many other counties that. We specify what the criteria are, then you can start with current use and you'd find that it's a lot of smaller farms. You know, um, they, they don't even meet that minimum acreage and whatnot, and so. I mean, I think there is an opportunity to have multiple land use tools or zoning tools and not just this one. Um, that could be more customized to what. What agriculture looks like here in Thurston.
And that is the kind of thing that we could do during the comp plan.
Comp plan update. I mean, the, the appeal is specifically on the designation criteria. For LTA, but the comp plan update opens up. A lot more doors, um, and I know the agricultural advisory committee is very interested in that. Um, and we heard that in public testimony too.
Yeah, we probably would be too. And I know just for my, speaking for myself, I know, I, I think there are a lot of different kind of interests that are. Like satellite or kind of ancillary to this long-term commercial significance, this designation. And I think for myself, I'm trying to like keep this really compartmentalized into that, like what is that commercially significant? Like, aside from the fact that, you know, right, I don't believe in promoting urban sprawl. Our one to five has terrible like environmental impacts, so.
So what, what I'm hearing. And, and please, if I'm wrong, let me, let me know. But it sounds like we can be a bit broad right now in what we designate. And then we can kind of work down when we get to the comp plan if we see.
I would.
Things that are.
Almost understand it the other way around, so we'd be specific here for long-term commercial significance. And then think about like, what kind of, what kind of zones would we want for the, you know, the smaller? Like five, ten, fifteen acre operations.
So are you in the exclude the four S camp at this point?
I think I would be amenable to segmenting it and looking for the high ag use four Ss.
Uh, so.
So I have high productivity ratings. I don't, it's.
Sure.
I've got the higher, because you've got Indianolas at point three, three and change, and then you've got the Spanaways at point five and change.
And I think, I think it could make sense to be. Uh. To include some of those specifically that have that higher, probably the, no less than the point five.
What were the Nisquallys?
So Spanaway Nisqually is point five five nine. Um, that's the National Community Crop Productivity Index rating, and then Spanaway Gravelly Sandy Loam is point five four nine.
What is a good number?
The number's one. Um, if you go up to things like that are class two or class three, um, they're point sevens. Of our original prime farmland soils list, they're like nines, they're eights and nines. These are all the new prime farmland soils. They're not as good as the ones that were originally designated, and so.
So what, what Joel said, but. You, you, you said nine, but you mean.
Oh, sorry, point nine.
Yeah, okay.
No, they're like really high.
Just making sure we have the scale.
And I know that we don't grow a lot of commodity crops here and apparently according to them, if it's good for those. This according to NRCS, if it's good for those, it's probably good for a lot of other things too, so that's why. Yeah, it's eights and nines. I just looked. The highest is our Everson clay loam at point nine seven seven. So let's get more of that.
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Nelson.
So one thing that was said, right, just kind of repeat something was talking about other counties. But I don't think we can look at what other counties do because they have different soils than us. And so they might have. I mean, they, you take, I mean, probably there's probably Spanaway and Pierce County.
But there's no, there's hardly any Spanaway Nisqually, so they have Spanaway but not Spanaway Nisqually.
So, I mean, there's different, the different soil types, I mean, there's hundreds of soil types. And so just because. We have these four Ss. If, just because another county kept their fours in, they might be very different soils than what we have. And I just, from experience, the, I mean. There's really not much you can grow other than prairie grass on Spanaway soils. And it's not. A very highly commercial prop, um. You know, like I said, I mean, the things that the ag land uses that excel on Spanaway are the ones that don't need land. The nurseries, the chickens, the. You know, beef cattle for some, for what, you know, dairy farm would work because they, a lot of them in this time period. Actually bring a lot of feed in rather than.
It's just space, not fruit.
Yeah, the space issue not a big issue.
Yeah, and I, and, and to your point about, so pasture, if you just look at the land capability for pasture, so Spanaways are, at least according to soil survey, are. Uh, four yields per acre? Is that how they do it, Commissioner Nelson? They, something, it's like one number they give you, but it's yields per acre. I'm looking to you to explain it.
Because the only, the way we go would, I mean, the way most ag stuff would be would for, for field. Would be four tons per acre and there's absolute, I've never seen Spanway grow four tons to the acre.
Most of the, the class twos and class threes are eleven to thirteen, so just to give you a comparison. And, uh, just for pasture.
Commissioner Nelson, would you, how do you feel about including four S soils that are productivity of point five or better?
I would. Feel strongly that we should not include any forest soils.
Go ahead. So I think one thing to remember about commercial significance, especially if we're thinking long-term. Um, we think about the economics of anything and farming would be included, like it's driven on like how much. You can get for it and that changes the economics and what becomes viable and what's not viable. It's the same thing you see in like oil drilling. It's why there's no such thing as peak oil yet, like as, so I think. Part, part of me thinks that we should build in what I'd consider almost a safety factor. Um, in some of those soils that are not. What we would, you know, really put in those kind of highest categories. But make sure that we're not keeping the things, or that we're keeping the things that are kind of peripheral and the economics could change and. Turn those into commercially significant over time. So I think there's that kind of, that long.
You think that line can happen at forest soils?
Um. I think those point fives is probably where I would draw that safety factor.
Can I, um, go back and, you know, earlier I said, I mean, we need to be really careful when we use the term commercially significant. And understand how low the bar is on that. I mean, because if we wanted to get into that and whether we're protecting. Uh, farmland that is also high, produces high commercial value. Um, you know. Let's just look at places that produce chickens and eggs and, uh.
Goose.
Goose, you know, I mean. We're, I mean, a lot of what we're talking about here is pasture land that doesn't produce, you know, that's not, it's not. High value and the, very intentionally, the definition of what's commercially significant is an extremely low bar. And so I wouldn't get too hung up on that.
Commissioner Haverstein, do you have something on this?
No, I'm just trying to listen to everything and take it in.
Well, I don't know if we're ready to make a decision yet, but I know that there's, there's basically. Three camps here. One is to put four Ss in wholesale, one is to put. Only the point fives and betters four Ss in, and the other is, and the third is to not put four Ss in at all. And I don't know if we're going to get to five votes on any one of those three.
Um, where are we at, excuse me, Chair?
Yeah.
Where are we at with. Allowing those. Uh, owners of property to opt in to LTA.
There, it's there.
It's there. Okay, so then that's.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I would be, uh, with four Ss far as. Not including it now, uh, looking at those. The, that land during the comp plan for maybe some, uh. Additional refinement and going with excluding four W and four S soils at this point in time for LTA.
Yeah, well, let's just focus on the four Ss since we've already worked on four Ws.
Are you, and just to clarify, is that sort of like the approach to the farmlands of statewide importance? Like it would be a look at four Ss in the same vein that we're, we'd be looking at FSIs during the comp plan update. Okay, I just wanted, I know you weren't here last week, but that was what was decided with the farmlands of statewide importance. Um, that it was a lot of, a lot of new soil types and not really understanding the full breadth of. The impacts would be.
Let's, let's get some thumbnail polling here. Uh, unless you.
My informational question?
Yeah.
Um. You've been asking about agricultural, current agricultural uses of some of this and. Of the four S soils, maybe even of the four W soils, are trees grown on any of these?
Four Ws definitely, um, four Ss maybe on the Indianolas. What, what I heard from NRCS is that the Spanaways are like the prairies that you see when you. You know, Myma Mounts kind of thing, and then the Indianolas are more of a transition. Um, and so trees might start encroaching on Indianolas, but. Probably not as much on the Spanaways.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I want to clarify, I'm not. I'm not saying adopt the four wholesale, so you know, I, I think that's not quite the right characterization for what I would like to have happen. I'm not saying all the four class fours should be included. I am endorsing the idea of narrowing it down. Um, I do want to point out as a historian. Um, that prairie soils were used for agriculture for thousands and thousands of years. And so, uh, and there are those who are interested in seeing a return to. Um, growing camus and, and things like that, so. You know, going to Commissioner Day's point, let's not assume that what goes on at present is the definition of what agriculture is going to be going forward because. Um, because honestly, if we look beyond the last hundred and fifty years. Um, a lot of these soil, a lot of these prairie soils were productive for human beings. Uh, as well in, in what would be called agriculture, just not the kind that we consider commercial agriculture, but you never know. It may come back. Um, and then another his, another historical point is. This division between land that is treed and land that is not, um, again, sort of looking at things from the Native American perspective. Um, fire was used to clear forest land and make it productive prairie. And we should keep that in mind that a lot of what is forested now was prairie when the land was managed. Um, by the tribes. So we can't make assumptions about even the forested versus prairie nature of. So we can't make assumptions about even the forested versus prairie nature of land. Um, so I just want to add that historical perspective. Um, and you know, for for whatever it's worth, I just, I just felt it was important to bring it up.
Thank you. So, back to this issue of what we're gonna include, what we're gonna do with forest soils, understanding that this could all be thought through. Uh, if we exclude some or any of the four S's at this point, we understand that we can revisit this issue during comp plan. And it might even be appropriate to redo that. So be, our decision for us right now is. Do we want to exclude four S's? Do we want to exclude four S's except for those soils that have productivity rating point five or better? Or do we want to do one other thing? And I'd like to get some thumb pulling on this, because if we got a majority. On one of these right now, we can move forward on to our next topic, so. I'd just like to see a thumbs up if you'd like to exclude four S's. For now and revisit it during comp plan. We're not gonna get five, hey, how about excluding four S's except if they have a point five productivity rating or better? You got four. And then. Helen, you you have not voted on either, so I guess you'd be uh, alternative, something other than that.
Right, it would be something other.
It's, yeah, there's only, well, there's only five soil types.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's the productivity ratings I was getting a little hung up on, because I'd want to understand that a little, a little better.
Um, it, the commissioner would leave the, the point fives and better are the two spanaway ones you referenced earlier.
Yeah, then I'd be better with that.
Make, make your proposal specific, please Commissioner Wheatley and we can.
Well, no, I mean, you were doing a straw poll, so.
Yeah, straw poll.
She, I believe she's saying she's leaning in the direction of that, I'm also only leaning in the direction of that.
Okay, so we're not, we're not hitting a consensus on any of this anyways. Um, it's actually moderately well split. But that's okay, I don't think we're gonna come to a consensus on what to do with forest soils just yet, so we'll probably have to come back to that. When we come back and talk about forest soils again, is there any information that you'd like staff to provide for us that might help out? Go ahead.
I mean, if, if you could get some sort of sense of like what the ag uses are on, current ag uses are on those soils. I think that would be, I mean, I would put myself in the like, also in the leaning camp, like. I'm pretty ambivalent on it actually.
Okay.
So if I, if we have that information, that would help.
Do you, um, just really quick, because it'll make it easier, assume like at least fifty percent of the site?
Yeah.
Isn't that seventy-five percent? I'll, I'll use fifty because that's like the baseline, um, because otherwise it gets really messy.
Honestly, yeah, whatever you want.
Okay, fifty percent.
I trust you, especially.
Okay.
Let's, let's move on to our next decision point. And I guess the next decision point would be, um.
Do you want fifty percent or seventy-five percent?
Fifty percent or seventy-five percent, a parcel coverage.
I'm gonna pull up the slide that has those decision points for the planning commission so that you can walk through that. Um, so these are the remaining decision points, we have what percent of a parcel must be prime farmland soil, seventy-five percent, fifty percent. Or some other thing that was not considered in the maps that we brought forward. Uh, we'll start with that one before we go through, and then I'll just mention the comments that we received. We really got fairly minimal comments on the specific criteria. The most common thing that we received was compensate landowners for their lost development rights and only protect the best farmland. Again, talking about commercial farmland of long-term significance. And uh, what does that mean, what land gets protected for that? The few comments that we did receive on specific criteria were to maintain a parcel size of twenty acres. Consider using a soils threshold of seventy-five percent or more and reduce the block size down to forty, forty acres. I will say we did receive some comments that nuisance claims are still a relevant thing, so that block size may not be as outdated. As um, some folks think and having like uses together makes sense, sir, so. Uh, starting with percent of parcel on prime soils.
Go ahead.
I was, um. Fairly well convinced by the, the group that we had here before that we need to have that at seventy-five percent.
I agree.
I guess my only question is, is if we do that, are we gonna go back and take out? The current long-term ag that does not qualify based on that number.
We will not be adjusting land that is currently zoned for long-term ag. And the justification behind that is the number, the number of our long-term ag that is currently enrolled. And being used for agriculture, it's like close to eighty-five, ninety percent, um, between seventy-five and ninety percent. Of those properties are actively being used for ag, so it, it really kind of meets some of those other non-exclusive criteria. Um, we're not gonna, we're not gonna touch the lands that are already designated for agriculture.
Well, not really, I mean, we're gonna change the criteria and then say, you don't meet our criteria, but guess what, you still get to be in.
I, I guess I should say, is that okay, you're factoring whether we're gonna go seventy-five percent or fifty percent? But it's kind of a side issue to that, really.
I mean, I don't know if we can, quite frankly, I don't know if we can change. I don't know that I feel right that we change the criteria. And then tell people that, you know, we changed the criteria and you no longer meet our criteria, but guess what, you're still in this. Because my, I mean, and I've, I've said this before, my biggest problem with the long-term ag is not the zoning or the criteria. It's the actual language in the code. We're, and zoning does, is not going to help any farmer. I don't, I mean, I don't think anybody will come to you and make that argument. What is going to help is actually having a code where farmers can do the things that they need to do or want to do to stay viable.
Is, is there a way, I mean, we have a, we have an opt-in option for LTA for, for. They don't even need to meet lots of criteria, they, it's kind of, they could bypass some of this by criteria. If there is somebody like Commissioner. If, if they would no longer be there because they only have sixty percent and we, and we changed it to seventy-five percent. How hard would it be for them to escape LTA if they wanted to? If, if, would there be an option for it at all? Could we build that in somehow?
Sorry, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm digesting and I'm, then I'm thinking, I will say that removing lands from long-term agriculture. Is very, very difficult under state law. Um, and, and we, we've been challenged on this in the past, specifically pulling out lands that don't meet the soils criteria. Because they meet some of the other designation criteria that we have in the comp plan. And so specifically if we're pulling out lands that are being currently used for ag that are zoned as LTA, but. Fall below that seventy-five percent threshold, I think the bar is gonna be fairly difficult. Um, it's not to say that we can't do it and we can't consider it in the future. Uh, there, there is just gonna be some nuances around that and how we have to look at it.
Yeah, I guess my issue, I understand Scott's point very well. I just, there's been people that were pushed into LTA prior that are in LTA right now that, that. Don't want to be there, I don't want to expand our LTA program now. And it's, it's uh, not as easy to get pushed in, I don't want to push people in just because people prior got pushed in. It's almost like continuing a bad policy. Uh, even if we can't make amends to the people that already got pushed in when they didn't want to be, I don't think that's a good reason to push more people in. I don't know if that made any sense.
It made sense to me. So just thinking about like, using that, using some sort of like opt-out criteria, that would make the opt-in absolutely meaningless. Because the next person who bought it could just opt out if it didn't meet the criteria. So if we had something like that, the opt-in becomes.
And I will say in terms of changing the designation criteria, there were recent changes to state law. Where the counties can only, jurisdictions can really only consider this with a periodic update, like wide-scale. Changes, um, we're already underway in response to appeal, so we're, we're good in this process. But it needs to be done holistically as part of the county's review for this whole designation. There will not be, it's, we can't do it under state law to have these one-off rezone requests for people to be removed from this. It can only occur when we do a whole county-wide review like we're doing right now and look at the designation as a whole. So, um, it, it's challenging, there are uh, difficulties with that, but it, that doesn't mean it's not possible.
So are people aware that they can opt out at this point?
Current, currently, we don't really have an opt-out clause, the way the language is written in the comp plan is that land should not. I would have to pull up the specific language in the chapter, but it speaks to something of the nature that land should not be removed. Unless there have been, similar to the policy we were just discussing for POG, unless there have been significant changes. And significant changes in the surrounding economic conditions that no longer make the property viable for that sort of a use. Or worth protecting for long-term commercially significant ag. So, uh, it's a pretty high bar to meet and prove. But uh, we, we don't have, there's not one-off opt-out language in the comp plan right now. And I don't think state law would support, um, site-specific rezone applications for. Opting out, it would have to be holistic review of the whole designation.
Would state law allow us to look at this as a repeal and replace instead of an addition to? So, say we just go to no LTA today and then start all over with all LTA under the new criteria. We do that right now?
I, I think that. The appellants that are currently challenging us will look at it as a change from our current designation. Um. Beyond that, I, I really can't, I mean, this, you know, this is a matter of kind of what the constituents in the community are gonna think. Not necessarily if the state is for or against a repeal and replace, so. Um, you know, any changes to our current LTA designation, I think. Raise concerns about how we're mitigating for that loss and uh, where it's getting added back in.
Yeah, you could correct me if I'm wrong, Maya, but in the past, when there has been an application to remove from LTA, the county had to. Find additional acreage to add in, right?
That is correct, and um, those removals were specifically based off of underlying soils, they didn't have the soil types. On their property when they got a specific site survey done. And this was actually in response to an addition that the county was doing, we were adding more ag lands back in. We offered an opportunity for folks to test the soils on their property, we got a few soils reports that indicated. The soils did not match the designation criteria, and so the county pulled out those couple of properties. And that was challenged, uh, it was a fairly small acre, acreage, it was around three hundred acres that got pulled out. Um, and that was challenged and the county had to settle by adding back in lands for long-term ag. And my recollection of that was that the lands that were added in uh, for long-term ag to mitigate for the lands that were taken out. Were not necessarily, um, they did not necessarily meet the soils criteria, they were part of a block and minimum parcel size. But they were used currently for ag, and so it, it's kind of this non-exclusive criteria thing of pulling in. To mitigate for where you're pulling out.
Commissioner Haversen?
I was just gonna, uh, when we talked about, uh. Four S soils, those, those are considered prime soils then?
Prime if irrigated.
Prime if irrigated. So, we go with seventy-five percent or greater. And seventy-five percent of that parcel is not irrigated. And it falls in one of those forest categories, then they're not considered long-term ag.
If, if you exclude it from that list, they wouldn't be.
Go ahead.
I just would love to get a thumbnail if, if we're ready to move forward.
Who's that seventy-five percent? Who's that fifty percent? Commissioner Wheatley?
Was, was that a, were you, was that a?
Thumbnailing for seventy-five or fifty, but I don't think we're near.
Oh.
Not either.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, for what it's worth, and maybe Ashley or Maya can confirm this, but um. My understanding is that seventy-five percent covers a lot of the. The, um. The soils that are actually used for agriculture now, right? As far as you know, I mean. Difference there is between the seventy-five and fifty.
Yeah, it's the same list of soils between the two, but just to illustrate. The baseline map and the scenario X map, these consider fifty percent. So, um, you, you can see in our old versions where we had a full list of prime farmland soils. That was twenty-two thousand acres, and then with a refined list excluding uh, four and below, it's twenty-four hundred acres. When we go up to seventy-five percent. Uh, we get twenty-three hundred, we, we have, we can have roughly the same acreage depending on the other criteria. We might even get more acreage, um. Depending on the other criteria, so with scenario Z, you have seventy-five percent or more. And dropping block size and parcel size and you still get seventy-two hundred acres added.
Does change anybody's mind on anything?
You think, the, the stakeholder work group have been coming to the seventy-five percent, we're really looking at trying to own that whole like. Protecting lands with the most prime farmland soils. Um, versus a parcel that could be a hundred acres and only fifty percent of that site is prime farmland soils and you've got fifty acres that. You, you are very limited in terms of what you can do with it.
Commissioner Day, you had something on that?
I just, um, in, I think the last slide deck, you had a table with the different scenarios in them. You still have it? Yeah, I grabbed my yield joint plans.
That was page five of. Her last time in packet.
If you and Commissioner Pesinger wanna borrow that.
Thank you so much. That was my question.
Forest three on one side, ag on the other.
And I will add the seventy-five percent, um, prime soils, that, that was kind of a unanimous decision by our stakeholder group. If I'm remembering correctly, initially, some folks were in the fifty percent camp. But once they talked about that more and the discussion, you know, compensation for lost development rights came up every single meeting with that stakeholder group. And one of the points that they made is they wanna, if the county is gonna be on the hook for compensating landowners in some capacity or another. That we should be compensating for the properties that have the most prime farmland soils on them, so that was part of the discussion that came out of that group.
Can we redo this thumbnail on seventy-five percent?
I've got an informational question first.
Please.
I, I don't understand what these recommendations here. We're saying, the public is saying to us, seventy-five percent, parcel size twenty, block size forty. That's not one of these options.
Yeah.
No, it was the public comment that we received during the, during the planning commission process. If we had heard it, you know, earlier, it might have been reflected, but it's sort of a combination, what you're really seeing.
What the acreage is for that?
Not exactly, because the decisions are really supposed to be about the criteria rather than the result.
Policy than the actual end number.
Um, but the, the intention of the three options, and this was, this came on the stakeholder work group too, is sort of these bookends. So you sort of see, see a mix, because we could have run a hundred different scenarios and it still might not land on the one.
So let's get, let's get back to this issue of. How many thumbs do we see for seventy-five percent?
Cause I don't have a lot of heartburn about it, if, I mean, it's difficult because it's within this context.
We, we have a majority on the seventy-five percent.
It's okay with me, provided, you know, other, other pieces fall into place correctly.
We're getting long for our day, but I, I would like, if we can, I don't know if these other ones are gonna be very long or not, but if we can knock them out so we can send staff back to work on other stuff, that'd be great. Uh, our next decision point. Which would be predominant parcel size be twenty acres, fifteen acres or some other size?
I'd like to see it stay at twenty acres.
I'd like to see it stay at twenty. I, I see at least five that are saying twenty.
What was the, in scenario Z, what was the predominant parcel size?
Fifteen.
And then the block size for that was forty.
Forty.
Okay, and when we look at that for the ag. And when we look at that for the ag, current ag uses, that's the most precise one other than the scenario baseline.
Um, uh, yes, and a lot of that has to do with, you remember how we were pulling in those adjoining parcels? We're only pulling them in if they are in current ag. So because it's more distributed with the smaller block size, you do end up with more current ag.
So essentially, I would be advocating for scenario Z.
So fifteen and forty or twenty and forty?
Well, let's, we're doing one thing at a time, so right now we're just gonna do block size, and you're at fifteen acres.
No, parcel size.
Or parcel size, I'm sorry, parcel size.
I, I, I think we're gonna take them separately. We we lose the, like, what you get out of taking them together.
It was a point.
It's a good point, but I don't know how we can.
But they just threw up three options. That's all they did.
So I I do want to just keep this vote to the individual items. Besides, parcel size, and we got, we got five for twenty acres. And unless you guys wanna make a compelling argument against it real quick. Okay, twenty acres, thank you. Block size. Anybody got opinions on block size?
For the stakeholder work group, no one, I, I don't think anyone was like two hundred and three twenty acres should be the one that sticks. There wasn't necessarily consensus on whether it should be forty or a hundred, but definitely the, it should be less than two hundred just.
What's currently?
Two hundred and three or twenty, yeah.
That's a big shift going from one extreme to the other down to forty though.
So I'm I'm just in the camp of it should, should just stay where it is.
I'm gonna go with Scott on this one. Let's, let's.
Can I ask Scott why so much?
I mean, we're seeing the like least for the most stringent criteria is the the vote that we're on here. So I don't agree with that.
You wanna tighten it up?
Um, why would, well, broaden it, be more inclusive, more inclusive criteria.
Let's, let's do uh thumbs first for the forty acre block size.
Yeah.
Yeah, for Helen, are you on at forty acres or?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with that or a hundred. I, I mean, yeah, I I'll, I'll go with forty, sure.
Okay, that's five.
Block size, forty, okay.
Just for the record, I'm, I was good at forty or.
Let let me ask, how many here liked a hundred? Would go with a hundred and over forty as well. Looks like forty wins, okay.
You guys are on a roll.
We have a good chair.
About that, but thank you.
Well, and um, just really quick, Maya, the the code, all the code changes?
Yes, the code changes was one of the pieces that we um were hoping to get a recommendation on tonight. Ashley, you wanna say anything about that real quick?
Yeah, so this really was just um, uh, inspired by the discussion of the stakeholder work group. That if we're going to be applying LTA zoning to more properties, that we should bring it into the twenty-first century. And have it be more reflective of the kind of agricultural uses um that are, that farmers are wanting to do. Or might wanna do in the future. And so it's really just an update to that use list. Um, and coupled with that is an update to the agritourism chapter. Um, it is a repeal and replace. It's largely to just. Clean it up. Um, it we, it's been in place for for a number of years now, and there's a lot of confusion about how the provisions um. Got applied, and so I mostly work for the prosecuting attorney's office um to try to clean that up. Um, not really a big expansion of uses, but hopefully it'll be easier for farmers or folks who are along the bound for byway and whatnot. To actually get a business started up that they were intending to do.
Does that start to address your earlier comments, Scott? Like, we need the code to actually support farming?
Um, it may, the one thing I will say about the agritourism is. Just because you're in ag doesn't mean you're in agritourism, because it's its own overlay. And I mean, yeah, I don't, I can tell you, it's, I've talked to a couple of people that. Have had serious troubles with it. Other people have been able to do stuff. But uh, I mean, I think that's kind of where I'm going is. You know, when we do this, we need to go through, when we do our comp plan, we need to go through specifically things like long-term ag and agritourism. And find out what's working and what's not, what do people need or want, and. And we are, are we willing to put that in the text?
And essentially, we want to be making sure that we're not, we don't have any like unnecessary barriers in our code to farming in those. Places where we told people.
And and to be honest, a lot of that had to do with me, just I like updated all the definitions. I really tried to go through the full definition list and make sure that the definitions for agriculture reflected the fact. That it is a commercial operation, it's a business, it's not this home mock, which is kind of how it was being treated based on the definitions. Um, and went through a lot of compliance cases um in trying to address some of the issues that, you know, weren't intentional. But we're really tripping up landowners. So that's what that package is. Um, minus the cluster requirement, um, so that one wouldn't move forward, so you wouldn't see any, any updates to the planned rural residential development. Chapter at this point.
So do you want a decision on that right now?
If you, it it would be great. I mean, cause that that, that way next time, it's really just focusing on those four S's. And we could bring back, I would hope, um, Mike can confirm this on that.
Did, did everybody have a chance to kind of look over these code updates? And so should I guess that we're not ready to take a vote on that particular portion of this? Could you please bring back that and the four S stuff to an work? To a work session number six on August second, would that be okay?
Yes, I'm on vacation.
You're on vacation.
Um, I might be able to to join and I'll be on the east coast with Maya, so.
So, so at the next work session, we would do this code update and then the forest soils decisions. And that's it. That's all that we're expecting, right?
That's it.
Okay.
And so for the four S discussion, uh, what additional information with the planning commission? Like, I know Ashley mentioned, we can probably bring back two separate maps that show um excluding all four soils. And then including four S's of a productivity of point five and above. Is there anything else on the four S soils that the planning commission wants us to bring back to that August work session?
You want to break down by soil type?
Well, no.
The existing farms piece, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Right, there you go, yeah, existing.
And I will say this, like the, it's, it's only five hundred acres that is not a point five rating or higher. So I don't know how much value it's gonna be. Um, like, it really is the span away. So if you want a new set of maps to get maybe as close to a recommendation as possible. I think it's just including those four S's point five or more with your other decision points. Um, so that you really get to see what that looks like and um.
The important map to me is current use, current agricultural use.
We'll have to run the whole scenario just to get that.
We could do that with the other decision points we made tonight, though, right?
Yeah, it would basically be taking, taking, you know, no fours or those fours. And seeing which one turns up with a higher current use.
Okay.
No, that that'd be excellent.
All right. Well, I think we have a plan for our next meeting. I was hoping we'd get this done in five, but six it will be. Um, so with that, does anybody have anything else for Meyer Ashley on long-term ag?
Yeah, I I do. Um, I, there's been a little bit of questioning um that I've been hearing about. Whether we're going to or whether we should discuss the McAllister Springs. Uh, you know, long-term agriculture land in the McAllister Springs area. Um, and I don't really know what, what the issues are, and maybe that's the point. Um, whether, maybe you could just sort of explain what that's, why that would be, uh, why that would raise some concern. And um, then whether we should have any opinions about that or not.
That, that's the McAllister geological.
Yeah, recharge, recharge zone, yeah.
Yeah, so that's an area that has specific policies, like even within the zoning code. Like, if you're gonna farm there, you need a farm conservation plan, and this was brought up by the stakeholder work group, so we took it to our water resources team. And we're like, you know, would you, would you approach us any differently? Would you want LTA and MGSa? Um, and they, the water resources team um still has a lot of concerns about the water quality in that area. Um, and I'll leave you with that. The 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 concerns haven't gotten better. So, or.
Does having it in long-term agriculture make their concerns higher?
No, so the, so the conservation plans are specifically about what kind of pesticides or fertilizers you can use in that area. Because the groundwater is groundwater level is so high, I'm sorry.
That's all being done in, in that area and not in L- LTA policies.
Yeah, no, it's just MGSa. So if you look at MGSa, there are specific provisions just for ag that limit current ag use. Um, and so there were some concerns about having expanded ag use, unless it came with very specific provisions. About what you can and cannot do or can and cannot apply.
That answer your question?
Yeah, well, I think the question is whether, I mean, right now, LT, none of that can be LTA, right? Um, and the, and the question is whether that might be allowable or not. Uh, if the farming is done under certain.
You can do agriculture within MGSA. However, we don't designate long-term ag within that area because there are additional restrictions on agricultural operators. That have made past determinations in the comp plan warranted as not commercially significant. Uh, so, so there's kind of additional inputs needed in order to make those operations viable. Long-term functioning, plus its proximity to the urban growth area and the growth in that area.
So it's not a part of what we're looking at at this point, then. I mean, it's not.
It's been brought up in public comment, um, but it it, at this point, we're not, we we haven't reopened that as part of the discussion, no.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody have anything else on LTA for Meyer Ashley? Here with that, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is staff update, and I see that Manager Davis is here with us.
I am here tonight. Uh, Maya and Ashley, thank you very much. Good job. Um, so just a few brief updates. Uh, so I would like to remind planning commissioners to please do go in and do your doodle poll. For the Lacey meetings, we do not yet have a quorum of members who have responded to that doodle poll, so please do so. Uh, also, on July twenty-sixth, at nine o'clock, there's a Shirley management plan briefing with the board. And then on August third, we have a wireless code briefing and a grand mound subarea plan briefing with the board of county commissioners. And that's the only, those are the only updates I have at this time.
Next question.
Go ahead.
Maya, what I forget?
I have one, I'm sorry, if I'm, if you said this and I just didn't hear it, I was typing to Ashley real quick. Um, we have a doodle poll out, uh, just a friendly reminder to our planning commissioners. We've only got four responses from some of our commissioners. If you could go ahead and fill that out, we're hoping to get that meeting scheduled in the next week or so. So that's for the Lacey joint plan review, and we're looking at dates in the end of August and a public hearing in September.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Davis, do you know if the county commissioners are gonna make any decisions on the SMP at that meeting?
Um, I believe they are gonna go through some of the significant items that we um receive comment on. And they're also gonna go some of, go through some of the individual designation change requests. Um, and they may make individ- they may make decisions in light of all of those as we move through the SMP review process with them. So, so yes, I would say they probably will be.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our calendars. Um, August second, we will be doing work session number six on long-term ag and maybe even something else. Or August second, that is, uh, is there anybody that's not expecting to be here August second? Hopefully, we'll all be here. On August sixteenth, we are uh looking at doing our public hearing for the force conversion ordinance. And then a work session on the CIP. Uh, hopefully, everybody can come to this one. Is anybody expecting not to be able to make it?
I'll be zooming in from the east coast.
Good for you. All right.
Don't go past midnight.
Well, you know how public hearings can be. All right, that's good. Uh, we struck our, uh, one topic for good of the order, but does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
Can we presume on a doodle poll if we don't respond that we're good with any time?
No. But you could ask Tasha to mark you down for everything.
Yeah, we can certainly mark you down for everything, Commissioner.
I guess now you can. All right, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
I just say you guys are like doing an amazing job of taking in all this information and terminology and using it appropriately.